Good afternoon. I'm Doug Shipman, Atlanta City Council President, calling to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Atlanta City Council. Today is Monday, December 1st, 2025, and I would like to ask the clerk to call the opening roll.
Council President Doug Shipman?
Present.
Councilmember Michael Julian Baum, Post 1 at large. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Post 2 at large.
Here.
Councilmember Ayesha Collins, Post 3 at large.
Here.
Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District 1.
Here.
Councilmember Carden Wykoff, District 2.
Present.
Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District 3.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Dozer, District 4.
Present.
Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, District 5. Councilmember Alex Wong, District 6. Councilmember Howard Shook, District 7. Councilmember Mary Norwood, District 8.
Present.
Councilmember Dustin Hills, District 9. Councilmember Andrea Elboon, District 10.
Present.
Council President-elect Mary Marcy Collier-Overstreet. Councilmember Tonya Lewis, District 12. Mr. President, we do have a quorum of members present.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. If there are no additions or changes to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adopt. Moved by Councilmember Bakhtiari, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion on the motion to adopt the agenda? We do this via name consent without objection. No objection to the motion to adopt. Madam Clerk, please sound the count on the motion to adopt the agenda.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt the agenda carries. It is my pleasure to welcome back to the podium Chaplain Roosevelt Johns of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department to offer today's invocation.
Good afternoon, everyone. Will you please bow your heads for a moment of prayer? Eternal God, our Father, we come today once again to give your name honor and praise. We exalt you in the presence of this assembly and we thank you for all the many blessings that you have bestowed upon each of us here. We welcome you here today and pray that you will guide all that takes place. You are a God of order and we pray that everything that is done is done in the spirit of excellence and order. Father, we pray that you would bless the city of Atlanta at this time and the work that shall take place here today. Bless everyone under the sound of my voice as they reason together, making decisions, developing plans, delivering judgments as it relates to the operations of the city of Atlanta. Help them to always be mindful of the people to whom they serve. Bless each one of them with the wisdom and clarity as they work for the good of the people. May all that they do please you and bless the people. In the matchless name of Christ Jesus, we pray. Amen.
As we stay in a moment of reflection, I would ask if there are any remembrances from my colleagues today. I would offer one myself. December 1st is typically the day that is recognized as World AIDS Day. It is a day that we remember all of those who perish in the incredible aftermath of the discovery and then what was the epidemic of AIDS in the 80s and 90s. And of course, it still afflicts so many more than it should today. I would just offer a remembrance for all of those who passed and all the families who continue to bear the burden of the scourge that is AIDS. Any others? With those and with those unnamed, would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we'll move to proclamations, commendations, other special words. First, I'd like to ask Councilmember Amos. I believe you have a special recognition to offer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know there's four individuals, and I'll call their name eventually, but I do know Mr. Martin McCrery is here. Can you join me up here, please, sir? So ladies and gentlemen, coming into office, I wanted to find a way to recognize residents of City Council District 3 on doing any type of distinguished service to the district, to the city, or any service to humanity as well. And I do see leadership from APD and FIRE. If you could join me up here as well, it'd be greatly appreciative as well. And not to slow down the process, I keep going. So on and how you doing, sir? So on and around October 20th, I received a call that one of our officers in Zone 1 was gravely injured. And at the corner of, I think it was James P. Broccoli and North Avenue, our officer was actually answering a help call to go help another officer, lost control of his car, and actually ended up hitting a house. The officer was trapped inside of the car, could not get out. The car was on fire, the house was on fire. And it was Mr. McCrery that was in the house watching the football game at the time, and I don't know if it thought it was a linebacker hit or running back, but come to find out, it was actually APD officer car that hit his house. But without any type of hesitation, Mr. Keyshawn Robinson, who is not here, Mr. David Pitts, Mr. Ryan Beck, and Mr. McCrery jumped into action. Jumped into action by bursting out windows, pulling on car parts, pulling our officer to safety as the car became engulfed into flames, actually having to dodge bullets because the car, of course, police car, bullets was in the car. They start firing from the fire. So it's days like this that I think we as a city should be able to stop and say thank you to our residents when they do something historic and heroic. Don't wear a badge, don't wear a uniform, just a common citizen that stopped at this particular day and time to help out a fallen officer. So I hold in my hand here an award that I created called the Distinguished Recognition Award, Atlanta City Council, District 3. And it's only a handful of people, and those people include firefighters that ran into a burning building to help someone. They include Abel Mabel Thomas as well and Mr. McCrery. Now we can add you to that list, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you. Just thank you. Well, there is thank you. And of course, we're joined by our Chief of Police and his command staff and our Chief of Fire as well, because we all was out there at that particular time. So we're going to get out the way if we can step up and take a picture with you. We'll be honored.
Next, I would like to ask councilmembers Boone and Overstreet to come forward in recognition of one Howard Shook.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for joining us today. We honor many people from this hallowed place, but this one holds a special place in our heart. We have several former elected officials that are here that are gathered today to honor the Dean of the Atlanta City Council, Charles Howard Shook. We would like to recognize we would like to recognize the 59th Mayor of the City of Atlanta, Kasim Reed, Joyce, the Honorable Joyce Shepard, the Honorable Lee Morris, the Honorable Debbie Starnes, the Honorable Yolanda Adrian. Any other former elected officials, will you please stand at this time? We also have many notable City of Atlanta retirees that are in the audience. We have our former HR Commissioner, Sherri Dickerson, Alfred Berry Jr., Charles Bell, please stand, Forrest Webb, the Honorable Greg Priggin, will you please stand? We also are joined by our Police Chief, Chief Darren Sheerbaum, Chief Rod Smith, Jim DuRette from the Buckhead Coalition. Charles Howard Shook has served the Atlanta City Council for 24 years. His wisdom, wit, and passion for this city has taught all of us the meaning of servant leadership. We recognize and celebrate his work today. And now, a short video.
We have both been with Howard Shook for most of his tenure. And when I think of Howard, I think of just how dedicated he is to the district and how he has fought for neighborhood rights his entire time since being elected, and really how committed he is to integrity. What about you?
When I think of Howard, I think about how creative he is. Howard is a beautiful writer, and I believe that creativity has really helped him serve his constituents and think outside the box and to himself.
He's a calm voice in the middle of a storm, and I hope that he will continue to be that in the future.
For me, Mr. Shook, you have always been a straight shooter. You were someone I could always count on. Thank you.
When I think of Councilmember Howard Shook, a few words come to mind: leadership, integrity, wisdom, mentorship. And of course, depending on what time of day you call, you can take the rest of the day off.
Hi, I'm Atlanta City Councilman Howard Shook. I represent District 7, and I chair the Finance Committee.
He's brilliant. He has great comedic timing, and he loves the city of Atlanta. Councilmember Howard Shook committed 24 years of service to addressing everything from roads in need of resurfacing to budgets in need of balancing. His husband and father is considered the dean of the council and has signed well over 40,000 pieces of legislation.
I tend to be more intrigued with the more boring stuff, you know, financial policies, budgeting, you know, the things that put people to sleep or the things that keep me up at 3:00 in the morning.
He was my handpicked successor.
Former Atlanta City Councilmember Lee Morris and Howard Shook were longtime community activists, both passionate about traffic congestion, infrastructure, and protecting single-family forested neighborhoods from commercial encroachment. So when Morris stepped down in 2001, Howard Shook stepped up, but not immediately.
I didn't want to do it. I was busy looking for somebody else. And all of a sudden, I remember I was running errands and it just the thought popped into my head that, wait a minute, I can do this job just because I had been around it.
And Howard Shook made me proud. Absolutely. He has been, I think, a superb public servant. He's got a commitment to the neighborhoods, not just in the 7th district, but throughout the city.
He cares a lot about the taxpayers of the city of Atlanta, the homeowners of the city of Atlanta. He breaks every decision down to how will this better the citizens of Atlanta? How is this decision supporting their families? How is this decision improving their safety? Or that decision is increasing their prosperity?
One of the great things that he was part of was setting aside reserves for the city. The city had never had cash reserves. Though the city had never defaulted on its bills going back decades and decades, the city council, Howard Shook and Felicia Moore and a few others, came up with the idea that the city should have cash reserves, and that's served the city very well.
One of the things that makes him so amazing with it being the financial guru of city council is we did everything we've done and he never raised taxes. That's amazing. Councilmember Shook helped shape me professionally. I remember the first time I did a presentation, I thought I did an excellent job. Lo and behold, I had a lot of questions. So really, the fact that he challenged me helped me in a professional way. So now, anytime I do a presentation, I make sure I know everything from front to back as far as that presentation. So I'm so grateful for Councilmember Shook and everything that he's done.
What makes him stand out is his love for his daughters. I have two daughters as well. He really and truly loved his kids. So that's one of the things that I liked about Mr. Shook. Very, very family oriented.
Bold, frank, honest, financial whiz, you name it. I certainly appreciate all the work that you have done and what you have given to this city. It has meant the world to all of us.
When I think of Councilmember Shook, I think of his unwavering devotion, his fiduciary duty to the city. And what makes him stand out is his wonderful sense of humor.
He helped me understand the whole legislative process, how to use the resources in the city, the staff, how to collaborate with your colleagues. I mean, I had a lot to learn. I had a lot of good intention, but I needed a map. And he was a great mentor, and I know he's been a good mentor to others as well.
Howard brought this sense of calmness to the city council that I think has been needed, especially for a lot of us new council members. This can be a hectic job, but you know, having that steady hand that has been able to keep us together has truly been invaluable.
I don't know where we'd be without Howard Shook and his longstanding commitment to the Finance Committee. He's been the chairman or vice chair of the Finance Committee for many, many years. That has led to good fiscal stewardship. The city's resources are always in good controls with him, the CFO, and the administration working hand in hand with the city council. He knows the processes. He understands the budget, and he wants what's fair and right.
You know, where you live is where they pave the streets or don't pave them, where they fix the water system or don't fix it, where the 911 calls are answered quickly or not, where police treat people with respect but also get the bad guys off the streets. We live in the local. We spend so much time talking about the national and international. Howard lives in the local.
When I lost the City Council President race, Howard wrote me a note. I still have it. I will always, I will keep it because to have that come from a colleague meant the world to me. And it was one of those things where, yes, this is why we do the work, is because win or lose, we are here to try and move the city forward. And the four years I was off of council, Howard was the one who just theoretically would pick up the phone and call me. That just shows what an amazing man he is.
My first impression was, who is this Abe Lincoln-looking guy? If I had to sum up, you know, Howard's legacy, I think it would be a legacy of finding the balance between making decisions that protect and serve the people who elected you, but also understanding how those decisions can be made or fashioned in a way to have a broader positive impact upon the entire collective of the city.
Councilmember Shook, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you all the best in your retirement and happy 24 years of service.
Howard Shook is known for his fiscal integrity and a man who loves his Ohio State Buckeyes and his Cincinnati Beagles, and a man who loves to look at Pulse Game press conferences. Thank you, Howard. Take care.
A long time ago, he realized that his district had less parkland and open space per capita than any other district in the city, and he wanted to figure out what he could do about it. The Buckhead CID and Livable Buckhead really got behind an initiative to see what we could do, and is from that that Path 400 was born. And it has been an absolutely transformational infrastructure investment that benefits both the folks that live in District 7 and other parts of Atlanta, but also the commercial business. but also the commercial business district as well. It's from that that I think people will be remembering Howard for years to come.
If you think back to the, you know, 24 years that he has served and think about what the community looked like 24 years ago and what it looks like now. I mean, just looking in Buckhead, Buckhead is such a different place today than it was back then when he started. And he played a big role in a lot of what happened. A lot of the development that took place in Buckhead, he gets credit for, you know, having a say in how those things evolved.
Councilmember Shook is retiring from his work on the council. He says he plans to do a little fishing, a little travel. He says he never thought he would stay so long, but one committee week blended into another to the next year and the next term. But he says he's thoroughly enjoyed the work.
I'll tell you why politicians sometimes stick around a long time. Being able to solve problems is addictive. It's a great feeling, whether it's for the city, the district, the neighborhood, or just for a single household. It's hard work, but when you kind of get to pull off those little wins, it's the world's best feeling.
Howard Shook was one of the greatest councilmembers we've ever had. Steady hand, fiscal steward, always willing to compromise and work towards the greater good. Thank you for your service.
Councilmember Shook is a true public servant, was the epitome of an elected official, and we are a safer city because of that. The Atlanta Police Department is going to miss him, but we're thankful for all he's done.
Councilmember Shook has been a champion, not just for Council District 7, but also for the city of Atlanta, our employees, and our residents across the city. He would be truly missed.
At this time, if you are here to honor the dean of the Atlanta City Council, Charles Howard Shook, we would like to invite you up. Please come at this time. All former elected officials, guests, please come quickly. If you are here to honor Howard Shook, please come forward at this time. We're going to be here for two hours. Two hours. I did a good job so far. And now, the 61st Mayor of the city of Atlanta, the Honorable Andre Dickens.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for that introduction, Councilmember Boone. Before I get started on Howard Shook, I wanted to say happy holidays, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving to this illustrious body, the Atlanta City Council. It's been wonderful working with you all over these last four years of this term. And I know this is your last meeting of this session, so I am grateful for your leadership. Thank you, Council President. As you're outgoing now, thank you for your leadership, as well as you, Councilmember Wyckoff. Thank you, and continue to lead in our communities. Let's give them a round of applause for their steadfast leadership over the years. There's going to be a chorus of voices for the one and only Howard Shook, because he is so deserving of our applause, of our appreciation, of our thanks, and our congratulations. I know we're joined here by former Mayor Reed, as well as a number of councilmembers that are current councilmembers, obviously, but those that are also previous councilmembers. And we're joined by members of my administration, my cabinet, including Courtney English, who's holding the Howard Shook poster, or whatever you want to call it. Take that to the game this weekend. But also my COO is here, Chief of Staff is here, and so many others. It's because, Howard, you are a leader like none other. When I came onto the Atlanta City Council in 2014, it was you and C.T. Martin. All I had to do was ask y'all, and you guys knew all the plays, knew all the things, and you really helped to groom a lot of us over those years that you were here when I got my start. And you, Howard, know what it takes to make sure that this city is run with good fiscal stewardship, with a mindfulness around the public, safety around how things should go with our infrastructure, around just being a good, all-around community builder. So you've done that faithfully for so many years, Howard. You've done it in your own way. You are hilarious. You know how to tell a joke, and sometimes it takes me to get all the way home before I catch it. The joke is that smart. You are a good colleague. You know how to disagree without being disagreeable, without causing ruckus, without creating enemies, because you know every two weeks, we're going to be right back at this together. So your collegiality has been very, very instrumental in the tone that this council has. And so you, my friend, have also been a great family man. You taught me how to be a girl dad. You tell me stories, and you got me worried about what, you know, how much it's going to cost me for a wedding one day. But to prepare to send them off to go to college and those things. So not only have you been a good legislator, a good, meaningful partner in government, you've just been a good, all-around friend, a good human, a good father, a good husband, a good just neighbor. And for that, you know, we say thank you. You set a great precedent, and your legacy here at Atlanta City Council will shine bright. And it also will shine because you set a north star to make sure that we hit a AAA credit rating by, you know, by the time you leave. And we've done that. We've done that together. You have helped to lead us to get there, all of us working together, again, as I say, as a group project. You've done that. Now I'm kind of mad that we did it because you're leaving. So had we not done it, you would have stayed, maybe, I don't know. I'm just talking. But you have really helped to do so many things for this city. Look at us now with reserves, with great quality of government, and we have you to thank for that as well. So I desire to give you the highest honor that I can give as the mayor of Atlanta. I'm giving you the Phoenix Award, Howard Shook. This is the highest honor you can receive as a mayor of Atlanta. And I know you don't always, you know, you're not a man that does this work for honors and awards. You do it from your heart, you do it for the community. You do it because the job needs to be done, and that's just who you are. You exude excellence. And so this is the Phoenix Award. And I'm going to read that it is this honorable, the Honorable Councilmember Howard Shook in recognition of more than 20 years of distinguished service on the Atlanta City Council and his steady leadership on behalf of the people of Atlanta for six terms. He has represented District 7, serving on every standing committee and providing consistent guidance on the city's finances, utilities, and long-term planning. His engagement with neighborhoods, attention to zoning and land use, and participation on key panels focused on pensions, water resources, and government efficiency have strengthened the work and standards of the city's governance and service to the people who call this city home. The city of Atlanta is honored to celebrate Councilmember Howard Shook, December 1st. Congratulations.
Thank you, man.
Next, the 59th Mayor of the city of Atlanta, Kasim Reed.
Look at this guy, I'm telling you. Not people, not many people know it because Howard was always grumbling and complaining during my time as mayor. And so, we never actually met anywhere in public. Because I didn't want to hurt his politics, and he didn't want to hurt mine. But in private, boy, did we meet. And what I will share with you is that Howard Shook is so phenomenal and worthy of the praise that he's getting today because although he is a rock-ribbed conservative, he never broke faith with who the city of Atlanta is. And he always understood fundamentally that we are better when we're trying to do the most for the most people. And so I remember when we were reforming the pension system of the city of Atlanta, and we were working and working and working, and Howard was on the other side of the table advocating and advocating and advocating for the city of Atlanta employees. We changed the city's financial trajectory forever, and there will always be something in the city called the Shook Amendment to prevent us from ever being at risk again. And so, in the town mood, they say what comes from the heart enters the heart. Howard, you know how I feel about you. And you know that our politics is in the grocery stores. Because it's in those grocery stores where the thousands and thousands of city of Atlanta employees, where the pension is now gone past 80% funded, Howard. It's those city of Atlanta employees who you see in the eyeways, who look you in the eye, and they say, "Thank you for my full pension. Thank you for making sure I have 100 cents on the dollar." And every time I hear a voice like that, I think of Howard Shook. God bless you, my brother.
We would now have Chief Sheerbaum, Chief Rod Smith, followed by Jim DuRette from the Buckhead Coalition. Chief Sheerbaum.
Thank you, Councilmember Boone. Officer Bordey, if you'll come over. Councilmember Shook, when I started on the Atlanta Police Department as a recruit, you were already part of this esteemed body. And for 24 years, three things never changed: your commitment that this city should have an effective and ethical police department, that we will be good stewards of the money that was entrusted us, and most importantly, you took care of the men and women of the Atlanta Police Department, the officers, our civilian team members. While we appeared before you at your budget hearings, you made sure that those that were out doing the dangerous and the devil cult were cared for. And I saw that as a recruit and throughout my journey as a member of the Atlanta Police Department. And it was never wavering, and it was never an act. And so this police department is very indebted to you. We have a small token of our appreciation. It could have been a magnifying glass to make sure we were spending our money right, or it could have been a pair of scissors to cut out the fat. But it is a symbol of this department to keep the city safe and do it properly and ethically. And I want to thank you for always giving us the tools to do that, supporting our mayor as he supported the men and women of the Police Department. We're going to miss you, but we're a better city because of you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief Roderick Smith, Atlanta Fire Rescue Department.
Good afternoon. Councilmember Shook, it is my pleasure to stand here today on behalf of the men and women of Atlanta Fire Rescue, who are not able to come to this microphone, and I want to say thank you. Thank you for being steadfast in your leadership with the city of Atlanta, for working with the administration, for standing for what's right, for public safety for the city of Atlanta, for fire and police, and your commitment to making sure that the citizens of Atlanta have the services that they need. Your service in the city of Atlanta will be forever, forever remembered as changing and transforming. And I just want to say thank you and present to you, on behalf of our members, the Award of Legacy Impact from Atlanta Fire Rescue. You are considered a family member. I have a sweatshirt to keep you cool when you're out walking your dog and a hat to keep your head warm, because your hair might not grow like mine. But I just want to say thank you for being a friend, and we appreciate everything that you've done for the city and for Atlanta.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Jim DuRette, Buckhead Coalition.
Howard, not only have you served this body for 24 years, but you've been a member of the board of the Buckhead Community Improvement District for those same 24 years. And in the Community Improvement District, what sets Atlanta and the region apart from places all across the country is our emphasis on building infrastructure to help those who live in, work in, and visit our great city. And on behalf of your fellow board members and the staff of the CID, I want to remind you of the great album by the band Yes, called Fragile. Came out in 1971. The very first song was called "Roundabout." And the first lyrics in that song are, "I'll be the roundabout." And Howard, you will be the roundabout. Because the roundabout that we are building with the city of Atlanta as our partner because of you will be known as the Howard Shook Roundabout after your colleagues make that happen. Councilmember Boone, you said we were going to watch a brief video. These are my remarks. Over.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Howard.
And now, members of the Atlanta City Council, the Honorable Doug Shipman, President.
Thank you very much. I serve, serving as Atlanta City Council President, you get a very unique perspective on different members and how they work and how they work with other people. And one, it's a testament to Howard Shook's leadership that he has been a chair so many times across so many councils, across so many council presidents, that they have entrusted him, especially with the Finance Committee. But when I came to this job, there were eight new councilmembers coming in, and I was new. And one of the first calls I made was to Howard Shook. And he said, "What do you want? You just got elected. You're already asking for something." He knows it's true. And I said, "With so many new members, I'm personally asking you to mentor the new folks." And he said, "They're not going to listen to me. They don't care what I think. They don't know me." And I said, "Well, I know you, and I know your reputation. And I think that they will listen to you, and I think that they will be led by you. And what folks will never see is how many hours he has taken over the last four years to make this an effective council and to make all of us who were new to be great councilmembers." Phone calls, sessions in his office, side conversations, small tips. Howard has always been somebody who has personally invested in the people who make council work and in the council itself. And I think Mayor Reed made a very And I think Mayor Reed made a very important point and I will extend it with one thing to say. Howard is a conservative who believes in government. That is in short supply today. He believes that local government can be a force for good. It can be a force for helping people live better lives and it can be a force for making a better city. And so, I would simply say personally, Howard, thank you for agreeing to make this council better. You certainly have made me better and I appreciate it very much."
Well, thank you.
The Honorable Alex Wan, followed by the Honorable Matt Westmoreland, and then President-Elect Marcy Carrio Overstreet.
All right. I'm not sure I can do this, but I'm going to try. So, eight years ago, almost to the day, I, in these chambers, in my final comments, quoted lyrics from a then musical, which now, the musical was wicked, but now in retrospect feels a little more self-indulgent because those lyrics are actually a lot more appropriate, not just because it was the number-one movie last weekend, but because of today's occasion to honor, you've heard legend, I think giant, I think icon like Howard Shook. He has been my seatmate for 12 years. I've never known a city council without him. More importantly, he has been my mentor, my teacher, my brother, my partner in crime, my collaborator, but more important, most importantly, my friend. I'm going to read this final verse from the song "For Good." And I know I'm going to lose it, but you only get to do this once for Howard. So, the verse is, "It well may be that we will never meet again in this lifetime. So, let me say before we part, so much of me is made of what I learned from you. You'll be with me like a handprint on my heart." So, with that, Howard, I'm, I'm going to miss you like hell. And I hope you will make good on your promise to come down here and take advantage of public comment. Perhaps committee chairs will waive the rules about donated time or limits. Because I'm sure whatever you come down here to say will be something we all need to hear. So, thank you for the last 12 years. All right, I have, I have another assignment from Councilmember Boone. We have a plaque for you, sorry.
Will members of the Atlanta City Council come closer? And former members, please come closer.
And since, since y'all can't see this, it is, "In recognition of your enduring leadership, principled service, and unwavering dedication, you have left an indelible mark on the progress and the civic life of our city. As a steward of fiscal responsibility, your thoughtful oversight and integrity have safeguarded Atlanta's future. Your legacy, sound governance, and commitment to community will continue to inspire generations to come." It's from President Doug Shipman and the Atlanta City Council.
The Honorable Matt Westmoreland.
Thank you. My assignment is to present you with this flag. 3,333 days ago, I got an email from Howard Shook. It was a response to a message I'd sent the afternoon before introducing myself and asking to get together ahead of launching a campaign to join this body. "Happy to," he replied, "there is some very important role expectations that district members universally expect of at-larges. Could meet for coffee next Monday through Thursday, Howard. My most vivid memory from our hour-long conversation at Cary Woo the following Monday came when I described the school board that I would be leaving as a team." "Yeah, we're not really a team over here," he said. "So much is 12 members vigorously representing the interests of our districts and you three at-large folks who are mainly useless." 3,333 days later, two things are very clear to me. One, this body is a team. And two, you have been our captain. The disasters you prevent from happening, fixing the ones that do. You are a stabilizing, secure, and unifying force in so many ways, seen and not. You foster community among the 16 of us who are here now and a quarter-century worth of folks who came before. You keep an open and candid line of communication to the other side of the atrium when some of us don't. Your reverence and respect for this body and this institution is deep, profound, and beautiful. I am so incredibly grateful for eight years of mentorship, counsel, and advice. I'm honored to have called you a colleague. I'm so grateful that I get to keep calling you a friend. Love you."
Look at this beautiful family behind us. Mrs. Shook and daughters. Aren't they beautiful? Look at this family. First family of District 7. And now, President-Elect Marcy Carrio Overstreet.
Goodness. So, so let me just start with, with saying I've, I've heard no lies, none, all of it is true. And I have witnessed and experienced a bit of everything that I've heard today. Howard Shook, you are anomaly. I've truly enjoyed getting to know you while I'm getting to know this job and getting to know all parts of the city. You've been invaluable to me this whole time that I've been on council. And, you know, just, I don't think anyone knows who you are in its entirety, including me or the council members, because I see different sparks of you all the time. And it has really been wonderful getting to know you. You are the main reason why I have just a little bit of angst about being the president. Because I know that you, we have got to feel your shoes in the right way. And that Finance Committee has to be just self-assured and it's got to be so Shook quality that we can, can and will again one day, I don't know about 2026, have our budget on consent like you did this year. You've done some pretty powerful things, some pretty powerful things that we just mentioned as, like, it's what we do. But it's pretty amazing. So, I want to thank you for being as authentic as you possibly could have been this entire eight years that I've been on council. And I will definitely be calling you, just like Juan said, I'm hoping that you will come to public comment. And I will waive the rules. Or, excuse me, I will ask my colleagues to waive the rules. And so, it's been a pleasure, just, and, and that is such an understatement. It's truly been a pleasure getting to know all of you, okay? And with that, are we going to do the, the, read this now or after? Which one? We'll wait. Okay, so we'll do the proclamation after we hear from a few more. But love you, love you very much.
And now, the Honorable Michael Julian Bond, followed by Liliana Batiera.
Thank you, Councilwoman Boone. First, we want to bring greetings to the Shook family. And we hope that we are returning him to you, much less for wear, and in good, a good state of condition. Just to be brief, to sum up my appreciation for you. Your height is dwarfed by your stature. Your contributions to this city, thousands will never know what you've done. But those who are here and present today, that have sat shoulder to shoulder with you, that have contended with you verbally and debated, that have voted with you, that have been cussed out with you in this chamber. Those who have served know that the endeavor to serve the public is an impossible dream. And you're that living dream, Howard. You've dreamed the impossible dream. You've run where the brave do not go. You walk when your legs are too weary. That has been your quest, no matter how too far, to reach that impossible star. You are there. How was the view?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. This is, this has been something that I have been dreading for a very long time, saying goodbye to Councilmember Shook. And like some of my other colleagues, you might see me cry at the mic. When I first started, it was really funny, Councilwoman Westmoreland was nervous about how Councilmember Shook and I would get along. Little did he know that there would be an obsession that formed here. And, it's okay, you don't have to look embarrassed. So, the, our first, one of the biggest things, I think, the, the moment for, for me and Howard, where I just really grew to love him more than I could realize was when Sam Masell passed, God rest his soul. We went to his funeral and afterwards, Howard and I went back to his office. Everyone had work to attend to, but it was one of those rare moments where Howard and I actually had time. And we just sat and we talked for hours. He told me about his time on council, the stories, the people he'd worked with, why he'd run in the first place, wanted to get to know me and why I did it as well. Called me crazy because he said he felt like I got into it for the right reasons. But you have been my dearest friend, my mentor. I don't know if there's very many other people in this building that I confide in as much as I confide in you. There's not been a single piece of legislation, a single issue, a single month that has gone by where you haven't guided me in some kind of way. Or when you know that I'm struggling, pick up the phone to let me know that you care about me and that you love me. A lot of people don't understand that the joy, one of the big joys of council is that it's not partisan politics. It's about equality of lives, it's about making sure that people can turn their water on, turn their lights on, drive down the street without falling into a sinkhole. I'm constantly on. But Howard is somebody who truly believes in that, who never have got into the seat for the intention of climbing to higher office. He's always made that very clear, the intention was to serve his constituency, never to lead with ego or to do any of those things. And many people, we're very surprised still to this day to find out how much I adore this human being. Because our politics, I mean, not only are we on opposite sides of the spectrum, we literally are on opposite sides of the hall from each other, like this entire building. But you will not find me in someone's office more. You will not find me talking to someone more about their perspective or their feedback because it does not matter the differentiations in people's ideologies because there's always common ground. And the common ground is serving people in this city and ensuring that they have faith that their local government is looking out for them. And I can't think of a more important job in this climate right now than that. You have been a steadying hand in your greatest legacy, I think all of us can agree, is the way you have brought people together on this council despite our differences. This four years, my first term, but you said it's been one of your hardest. And I don't want to imagine, cannot imagine what it would have been like without you here. At the end of those really hard days, to still come to your office and to be able to talk to you and be able to speak freely, to cry if needed, but to always leave laughing and happy to whoever replaces, not replaces, fills the seat after Councilmember Shook. Council will be happy to have you, but I do want you to know that you have a giant, giant seat to fill, a big pair of shoes and an even bigger heart. And Howard, I don't think any of us are going to stop calling, so, I'm sorry, I know, I know we're tiring. But you should also know that I will continue, those who know, I prank Howard daily, like, all the time. Whether it's jumping out of a closet or Google AI-ing things in his office. The last time I jumped out of the closet and scared him, he asked me how many more times I was going to come out of the closet in my life. Further proving what an ardent supporter he is of LGBTQ rights. But I love you, Howard, going to miss you and I'll always be calling.
The Honorable Mary Norwood.
Howard has been so important on this council, representing the eastern part of Buckhead through a lot of turmoil, as we have all seen over the years. But he has been steadfast and true, caring about his part of the city passionately, but also caring about the rest of the city. So, his efforts and his success in providing teamwork and unification in this city cannot be overstated. So, I am delighted to honor my colleague, my Buckheadite, Howard Shook.
The Honorable Ishay Collins.
Good afternoon, everyone, just chuckling because he literally just said he'll pay each one of us $20 not to say, say anything. But that is. You, but for you to know that while we're all laughing is the reason why we love Howard so much. So, I'll make this very quick as I am entering my 12th month on this council. And just the love that's being shown and the opportunity is one that I wish I had the opportunity to serve with you alongside you longer. When I first called, I remember when I was running and I represented the south side of this city on, on the school board. So, I knew I had to call the north side and one of the first people that I called was Howard. I asked Matt for his number, called Howard, Councilman Shook, and told him that I am going to enter the race for post-three. And he said, his first thing, he said, "Why?" And I was like, "I didn't know how to take it," right? I didn't know if it was the joke or if it's, what's serious a question. Here I am, this young candidate gave him my whole spiel and he said, "Good luck, hope to see you on the other side." And so, I get on council, I'm here, my staff, I'm new, so my staff comes and they walk in, they say, "What did you do?" And I said, "What do you mean, what did I do? Councilman Shook just came down here, he never comes on this side." And I said, "Wait, what happened?" So, I go to his office, but it was the love and relationship of this young eager girl asking all these questions about the budget and getting every answer that I need. And so, it has been a complete honor, Howard, to serve alongside you. I look forward to continuing to serve you as one of your at-large members, but also calling you for your advice, just the institutional knowledge that you provided. But I think it's, will be remiss not to thank his family for loaning him to us 24 years. And he speaks so much highly of you guys. Just thank you all so much, but you will be missed dearly and I wish I could have been a part of the stories of how great you are. But my short time with you have been so memorable, so thank you so much for everything. Hope to make you proud and hope to continue to make you proud. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Shook, thank you for all you have meant to the city of Atlanta. And I can think of six times that you walked into my office. And I knew that when he came in, it was serious business. So thank you for caring about all of Atlanta. Thank you for that two-page letter you wrote to the Honorable Dean C.T. Martin upon his retirement. His family and I got a chance to read that letter. Thank you so much for all you have meant to Atlanta. And there are others that we're going to give one minute to. At this time, 60 seconds.
Make it 100. I'll make it shorter, sweet, since I'm under directives here. A lot has already been said, no lies have been told. And a lot of it has been about how we will miss Howard Shook. I've certainly enjoyed my time with him, especially the past few years. We've served on the Finance Executive Committee together, learned so much from him. And a lot has been said about how we will miss him. But I can certainly say that you won't be far away. You probably are not going to miss us because anytime we have a wonder in our head about what, what would Howard Shook do, what would Howard Shook say, we're just going to pick up the phone and call you or text you or tell you we want to take you out to lunch. So I look forward to those times and I just want to thank you for everything you've done. Much appreciated.
All right, Dr. Shook.
Howard, I miss you and I'm going to miss you more now that I can't come down to City Hall and see you. But let me tell you, from the time I was in office, and I was in office for 17 years, and Howard truly was, you know, we talk about partisan politics and Republicans, Democrats, all that kind of stuff. Howard is a true example of what we should be doing in DC, Washington DC at this point. He is such a, I mean, you can talk to him about anything. We can get behind closed doors and all of us as colleagues, you know, he's brought us together, pulled us behind closed doors. We'll talk politics until we blew in the face, Howard, leading us and really enticing us to really have open conversations. I used to, I was quiet on the council and Howard said, "Are you going to ever talk? Are you going to ever say anything?" Howard was my mentor. He's always been there for me. I love Howard, I love him to death. And your family, you have a beautiful husband, dad. Thank you, Howard, for all you've done for us, for the city of Atlanta, for me. I appreciate you and I love you.
Thank you.
Very briefly, all of these wonderful things are true and excellent, and I could repeat more. But I just want to say Howard has another side of like demanding what he wants. So Carla Smith and I, when we were on council, we were more southern and some people called us hillbillies. So we formed a Country Girl Caucus of City Council. Howard came down and said he was going to file a formal grievance with the Law Department if we did not allow him to join the Country Girl Caucus. So we gladly allowed it. We weren't afraid of your grievance, we just wanted you to be with us. So it was a lot of fun serving with you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'll also be brief here. I was one of the fortunate ones that Howard took under his wing four years ago. When I first got elected, Howard called me and said, "You got some big Shaquille O'Neal sized shoes to fill, kid." But I've been fortunate to work alongside him and, and just see how he works and prepares for this job. One of the things we strive for is the no-report. And as a committee chair, one of the things, if you come to full council and you don't have a report, that means that you did the work in committee prior to coming to that committee. And that's something I learned from Howard. We would get our committee reports a week before. And I would get that Friday night call from Howard saying, "Did you see the agenda?" Then sometimes I'd get that Sunday call from Howard talking about specific legislative items. And this would all happen before we even got to our Finance Committee meetings on Wednesday. And so what you would, what you would see from Howard was that it was a lot of work and preparation that was put into this job to get to this point. And so I'm really thankful for him having, being able to teach me and others alike on this council how to prepare for the job, how to make sure that we were better council people. And it's because of you, Howard, and your mentorship that we are where we are today. Personally, I'm going to miss our, our conversations. I'm also a girl dad. Howard loves his ladies. We spent lots of times talking late after meetings during the week, just closed doors, just talking about our girls. And I know how much you love them. I've got two young girls that I love dearly. And I know you and I had lots of conversations where I know that I'll be a better father because of you, Howard. So I appreciate that and I appreciate everything you've poured into me and look forward to continuing having those conversations. Love you, bro.
Hey, y'all, I will be brief. I'm Councilmember Jason Dozier, representing District Four on Atlanta City Council. And my district is very different from Howard's district. But even though I've only served on this body for the last four years, I feel like I've learned so much about what Buckhead has off, has to offer, what District Seven has to offer. Because y'all have had someone championing you in your communities in ways that I strive to, to, to be like and to, to model and to just try to, I want to be like you, Howard. Oh, sorry, sure. I will say, as Jason had said, you know, we're both girl dads. I don't know how you did it all these years, raising these two young amazing women. My kids are only five and two, and I want to make sure that they can grow up to do the amazing things that your little girls have done, despite the fact that we are in this room doing this work, day in and day out, trying to make this city better. And so thank you for being an inspiration. One thing I will say too, my office is right next to Howard, y'all. And so I think our, our staff's vibe and meshing ways, I don't think many other staffs mesh with. And if, if you ever come down our side of the, the building, you might hear the laughing, the cackling, the kikiing. But it's because District Four and District Seven have worked well together. And we will continue to work well together regardless of who's in your shoes. And just thank you for being the person you are. And thank you for sharing our mutual love for the state of Ohio, for our 16th president, for our veterans and military families, and for continuing to be a model for all of us on this body who strive each and every day to be just like you. So thank you, Howard, thank you, we appreciate it.
Antonio Lewis, Atlanta City Council person. And just thinking about my 60 seconds, I just want to make sure I said this to have the previous council member come up and say how that they didn't talk. When Mr. Shook met me as a 33-year-old young person from Cleveland Avenue, he never had to tell me to talk. And to, to, what, what I mean by that is I went to him for institutional knowledge. What Mr. Shook represented on council was a person who could tell me what had been done, how they can do it and how we can do it better. And I also went to Mr. Shook when I needed to talk to other council members. Sometimes to put a message out, I would go to Mr. Shook and I would explain what this, and I would explain it in detail. And that was ways to get things out. I also want to say, when you talk about differences between people and trying to be like Mr. Shook a little bit and being more yourself. Mr. Shook wears boots, I wear F-Force Ones, right? And so it, it shows Atlanta. But Atlanta does not work if the guy on the northeast side of Buckhead does not be fair when it comes to legislation to the guy on the southeast side of Cleveland Avenue. So truly appreciate you being on council and truly appreciate the fairness you've always shown. Thank you.
Well, I was standing down there trying to decide, should I be the only council member not to say anything and take that $20? But I guess I lose that bet. You know, Howard Shook is someone that you have to call the whole name. He's not Howard, he's not Councilmember Shook, he's Howard Shook, that carried weight. You know, I remember first getting over here, we had several conversations coming from the school board. Came over here and he came into my office one time, I think about this time last year, talking about the, um, whisper, OIG stuff. He said, "Well, what you, what you think about this, what you want to do about it?" And I guess he sensed that I was ready to rumble. I wanted all the smoke. And he said, "Well, be careful what you ask for." And it was at that time I stopped listening to what Howard Shook was saying and started learning from what he was doing. Because my four years on this council have seen you not to be a builder of consensus, but be more like Dr. King and be a molder of consensus. And that is something that I can always appreciate. I mean, coming on board, I know we represent the same interests. You represented Buckhead, I represented the Bluff, Buckhead Bluff, Buckhead Bluff. But what we represented was a better Atlanta. What we advocated for was a better Atlanta. I did it through services, you did it through fiscal responsibility. And I can definitely appreciate that. But since I also know you as well, I'm going to go ahead and call the question so we can get out of here and shut this down. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have the official proclamation proclaiming today, December 1st, as Charles Howard Shook Day. I am joined by the Honorable Dustin Hillis. And we would like to recognize some very important diligent servants that are in the audience, Mr. Tracy Thornhill, Mr. Alan Lee, the Eastlake Foundation, and Ty Spears. Thank you all so much for being here with us today. In recognition of Howard Shook for his six terms of service on the Atlanta City Council, whereas Howard Shook has devoted more than 24 years of distinguished service to the city of Atlanta as the elected council member for District Seven, now completing his sixth term. And whereas he has served on all seven of the city council's standing committees and currently serves on the Committee on Council, the Committee, City Utilities, Zoning Committee, and as Chair of the Finance and Executive Committee. And whereas District Seven, known for its historic single-family neighborhoods as well as its vibrant offices, hotels, restaurants, and retailers, has benefited greatly from Howard's steadfast representation and deep commitment to community. And whereas Howard's dedication to civic leadership began long before he joined the council, including eight years as President of the Ridge Dale Park Civic Association, Chair of the Buckhead Neighborhood Alliance, co-founding the Partnership for Better Government, membership on the Board of the Buckhead Area Transportation Management Association, and appointment to the City of Atlanta's gentrification task force. And...
Whereas he has provided exemplary leadership in fiscal and infrastructure oversight, having chaired the Finance Committee for seven years and the Utilities Committee for four, served as President pro tempore of the Atlanta City Council, co-chaired the Select Committee on Pensions, participated in the Defined Contribution Management Committee and the Mayor's Atlanta Pension Panel, co-chaired the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Commission on Waste and Efficiency, and served as Chairman of the Atlanta Fulton County Water Resources Commission. And whereas his thoughtful analytical approach to budgeting, finance, and policy has earned him recognition as the council's steady hand and finance guru, guiding Atlanta through complex fiscal challenges and helping to maintain strong reserves, balanced budgets, and a AAA credit rating. And whereas Howard's humility and independence, often reflected in his self-description as the council's warrior in chief, have made him a trusted and principled voice during moments of challenge and transition.
Now therefore be proclaimed that we, the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the residents of the city of Atlanta, do by here, do hereby honor and recognize Howard Shook. And we are naming this the Howard Shook Day. Congratulations. And before our official picture, photo, we would like to hear from the District Seven Councilmember, the Honorable Howard Shook.
Is it really 224?
Yes, it is.
All right, I want to thank everyone for participating in this highly implausible event. Special recognition to Andrea Boone, who put all this together. She is the Nick Saban of proclamation planners. And I want to say thanks for the video. I haven't seen acting in a film like that since The Godfather. I want to thank my wife, Elise, and Catherine Rae Martin, who are, have, the girls took the red eye from New York. I want to thank them because here's something we all know. Campaigning can be harder on the spouse than on the candidate. And we bring our work home with us every day. So, thank you. I want to, wow, I want to thank the mayors. Reed is still here. Where is the council president? Sir, with your permission, I'd like to reserve 60 minutes of my remaining rebuttal time for, for the end of the meeting, if we ever get there. That's it.
And now at this time, we would like to ask all members of the Atlanta City Council to join us for an official proclamation. Mayor Reed, will you join us?
Thank you all so much. Next, I'd like to invite Councilmember Batiera forward. And all those who are here for the recognition of the Eastlake Foundation, to please join us up here on the dais.
Good afternoon, everyone. Here, I know, we've been... Thank y'all for sitting through these poor children in the front. Thank you, guys, for sitting through all of this. This is government. Welcome. So, very quickly, I want to take a moment to really recognize the Eastlake Foundation. For those of you who may not know, the Eastlake Foundation has been a transformative force in the city of Atlanta on the east side. You're gonna hear in a moment from Eli Askeya, the executive director, as well as Shannon Heath Longino, who, in so many ways, despite being eight when she started being a secretary for the meetings that led to the Eastlake Foundation, also still embodies so much of the spirit of what it is. Ms. Askeya, I'm gonna kick it over to you first, is that okay?
First of all, Councilperson Bakhtiari, thank you so much for sponsoring this. We are so humbled. Eastlake Foundation, this year is our 30th anniversary doing work in the Eastlake community, which is the furthest neighborhood east in Atlanta. Over 30 years ago, Eastlake was not the community that everyone wanted to live. But because of some dedicated residents, a president of the Tenant Association, Ms. Eva Davis, a philanthropist who you all know, and real estate developer Tom Cousins, Ms. Shirley Franklin, who wasn't mayor then but became mayor later, and a number of many, many thoughtful citizens reimagined what Eastlake could be. They understood the value of families that lived there, that wanted the best for their children, and through no fault of their own, were not given the resource and access, for equitable access to the resources that they deserved. And so, the Eastlake Foundation was established 30 years ago to ensure that all of its partners, from the Eastlake Golf Club to Tour Championship, to Drew Charter School, Sheltering Arms, Eastlake Early Learning Academy, in partnership with the Y, provided and collectively came together to provide resources so that every child, every family, could thrive. And so, it is such an honor. I have our team, half of our team is off today and still came up here to celebrate with all of us and with the city of Atlanta for this honor. And of course, I'm gonna have Shannon speak in just a moment, but I cannot tell you that the legacy of the work that's thought about 30 years ago, the architects of the vision, I don't think anybody could have dreamed that we would be here today. And it's because of caring, thoughtful citizens in Atlanta, in Eastlake, and across the country who gather together. When we are one community, there's so much that we can do. And so, I want to leave this before I turn it over, is that former Congressman Shirley Chisholm, and this is the quote that I live by every day, and so does my team, "Service is the rent you pay for time here on this earth." And the Eastlake Foundation, every single day, pays its rent and pays it on time. And so, I thank you all for celebrating with us, and thank the council members here today to honor the legacy of our founder, Tom Cousins, and the architects of the vision, Ms. Eva Davis, Ms. Renee Glover, and so many others. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I'm Shannon Heath Longino, and thank you, Councilwoman Liliana Bakhtiari, for this honor, because it is past due. Thank you so much for your vision to carry this out. As one of the youngest planning committee members, working alongside my grandmother, Eva Davis, at that time, when she was envisioning the community revitalization, her ideas were laid on the table, intentionally making sure for generations to come that our families were never overlooked and never underserved. The Eastlake Foundation was birthed out of a vision where she wanted a quarterback to oversee all of the services that we continue to offer families that come through the community. It is their home. They are not a transaction. How do we keep the services and residents viable, living, and thriving at all times while they go through their transition of empowering them and making sure that they get what they need while they live there? Eastlake is not only a community, it was birthed out of sacrifice that we made as families living in Eastlake Meadows at that time. Being eight years old, understanding that this lady, Eva Davis, was collaborating to bring in partners such as Tom Cousins and his family, still to this day remain a hard focus, main focus, and an intricate valuable piece of how the communities continue to work. The Eastlake Foundation is celebrating 30 years. It is continuing to be a viable piece and a thread that holds our community together so that families, wherever they are, can be met with resources to serve their families, not laying out a cookie cutter, but giving them options. So, thank you for 30-plus years of keeping the commitment, keeping the work going, but also still listening to the residents. And for those who are in communities, just be reminded that the residents are stakeholders. We are nothing without the voices of the people, that the choices that we make, it impacts them. Your choices that you make will not work if you're not keeping stakeholders at the table, because it is about them and it serves them. And again, thank you again to our city, but thank you for the Eastlake Foundation's inception, its rule of thumb to keep the community first, and thank you, Councilwoman Liliana Bakhtiari, for continuing to serve and work with us very closely to keep our vision. And my grandmother is smiling to this day, Mr. Cousins is smiling, because this vision, it was birthed, but it is still growing, and we are all in partnership together to make sure this work continues to grow. It is live work. Thank you so much.
Another note I wanted to say is, coming, it's not lost on me. This was a seat that was once held by Hotea Williams. This is the district that represents the legacy of Eva Davis, and it is not lost on me, the honor and the responsibility and the legacy that comes with being the council member that gets to represent such a deep history. And as somebody who grew up with a dad who was delivering over on that east side, back when Shannon was a child and kids were having to get bused out of Eastlake because there was no school option, and knowing, watching how the community came together to ensure that kids in Eastlake got prioritized first, and Eastlake had housing built for them, and were guaranteed an education at Drew Charter School, which has become one of the best schools, if not the best, in Atlanta. And all I can say is, knowing what it cost, that nearly cost Shannon and her grandmother their lives to see this transformation, that is not an exaggeration, knowing what community effort it takes, it is hard to do the right thing in bureaucracy. It takes, it's moving mountains. And this Eastlake Foundation, from the time I've known it to now, is nothing but community-driven. And I am honored to be at the table with you all. I'm so excited that you are celebrating 30 years. I can't wait to be here to celebrate 40 with y'all. And so, I'm grateful. Thank you so much for the lives you've impacted, saved, and also, Tom Cousins, God rest his soul, thank you to him as well. Thank you all. I'll take a moment to go ahead and read this. In recognition of the Eastlake Foundation, which is proudly celebrating 30 years of service commitment to the transformational impact of three decades uplifting the needs of the Eastlake community. Established in 95 by Tom Cousins, the Eastlake Foundation was founded with a bold vision to create thriving, inclusive neighborhoods where all residents could achieve their fullest potential. Guided by a deep belief in equity, collaboration, and opportunity, the foundation, carrying on the legacy of Tom Cousins, Eva Davis, Renee Louis Glover, has served as the community's champion, bridging residents, partners, and institution to ensure that every member of Eastlake has access to resources, tools, and support needed to flourish. Through strategic partnerships and community-driven leadership, the foundation has developed a nationally recognized model that integrates mixed-income housing, cradle to college education, and community wellness as an ecosystem where prosperity and purpose coexist. The Eastlake community now stands as a testament to what is possible when vision and compassion meet action, home to large-scale preservation of affordable housing, the historic Eastlake Golf Club, and the distinguished Charles R. Drew Charter School, the first charter school in the city of Atlanta, and a leader in academic innovation and achievement. The remarkable successes of the foundation have extended far beyond its geographic boundaries, serving as the inspiration for purpose-built communities and national network that has replicated this holistic model of community redevelopment in over 25 neighborhoods across the country. And for 30 years, the Eastlake Foundation has embodied Atlanta's highest ideals of civic partnership, inclusion, and resilience, transforming challenges into opportunities and neighbors into family. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that I, Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, and the members of the Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the residents of Atlanta, do hereby recognize the Eastlake Foundation's enduring commitment to empowering residents, uplifting communities, and creating pathways to share prosperity for generations to come. We'll go ahead and take a photo, yes.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask Councilmember Collins to come forward, and all of those who are here for the recognition of the Atlanta Youth Climate Action Fund, to please join us up on the dais.
Welcome, you guys. You guys look amazing. Let's close this great time on our agenda. Yeah, come on and double up. I know there's a few of you, I want to make sure we get all you guys in. Yes. So, good afternoon. We have Mama President-elect O Street getting us together. We love it. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all so much. We are so excited to honor and recognize the Atlanta Youth Climate Action Initiative with an actual proclamation and making December 1st your day. And so, I want to, before I kick it off, because it's extremely important that you all hear from the actual people that are doing the work versus the council member that has, you know, supported the work. And so, you know, you all, today, we gather to honor a movement led by the boldest and most visionary voices in our city, which is our youth. The Youth Climate Action Initiative represents the power of young people rising to meet the climate challenges of our time with courage, creativity, and a commitment to building a greener and healthier Atlanta for all of us. I am going to turn it over to Chandra Farley, who is our Chief Sustainability Officer from the Mayor's Office of Sustainability and Resilience. Then, we will hear from Kate Hewitt, who is the Executive Director of the 21st Century Organization, 21st Century Leaders, and then Gabriel Barazi. Did I say that correct? Barazi? Barazer, sorry, Barazer, who is our youth project leader. And so, I will now turn it over to you, Madam Chief, to share more, and also, we'd love to hear from the others. Thank you.
Wow, first of all, I'm really glad that our youth were able to experience the full spectrum of government process this afternoon. But I really am excited that our youth got to see the best of our city today. The fellowship and partnership on display here is a fantastic example for these incredible young leaders. And also, we want to thank Post 3-at-Large Councilmember Ishay Collins, as a former educator, education equity leader, and APS board member. And I believe the youngest member on City Council?
No, no. Uh-uh, I'll be 26th of February.
Okay. Close. To, is such a wonderful representative for sponsoring this proclamation for the Atlanta Youth Climate Action Day. On behalf of the Mayor's Office of Sustainability and Resilience, I also want to thank the entire Atlanta City Council for their enthusiastic support of declaring December 1, Atlanta Youth Climate Action Day. So, we can have a round of applause for that. Investing in youth leadership has been a cornerstone of Mayor Andre Dickens' agenda. First declaring a year of the youth in his first term, that important initiative has continued and continued to grow under his leadership. And Janine Lewis, our Senior Advisor for Youth Development, has been a great partner. We also heard loud and clear from the passionate members of our Climate Resilience Advisory Board, as well as so many across the city of Atlanta, that youth absolutely had to be at the center of our climate action planning here at the city. It is them who will inherit the responsibilities and consequences of the decisions that we are making today. So, when we set goals like achieving 100% clean energy for 100% of Atlantans by 2035, when we set goals to say that we want Atlanta to be a net-zero city by 2050, the people you see standing here, their young brothers and young sisters, are the ones who will be living in that city built for the future, as we hear our mayor saying. So, our advisory board took this charge very seriously, and we actually now dedicate a certain number of seats on our Climate Resilience Advisory Board specifically for these youth leaders. So, we look forward to having them cycle through that leadership. Subsequently, what we are really also celebrating today is that Atlanta was thrilled to be one of 100 cities across the globe selected for the inaugural Youth Climate Action Fund. We were one of 100 cities spanning 38 countries, representing over 62 million residents across six continents. Thanks to this funding, since 2024, we've been able to invest $150,000 directly into projects led by these youth and partner youth development organizations like 21st Century Leaders. Today, we are proud to recognize our 30 youth project team and the hundreds of youth that they activated in their neighborhoods and communities across Atlanta, as well as the entire metro. I am grateful to my Office of Sustainability and Resilience team, and especially Beth Graham, our Stakeholder Engagement Director, who has led this program with passion and built it into a globally recognized initiative, because all of the other cities want to know how we are doing it here in Atlanta, and how we have been so successful here in the ATL. So, thank you. Next, I'm gonna turn it over to Kate Hewitt, our, the Executive Director of 21st Century Leaders, our partner. I also want to say, I've been engaged with 21st Century Leaders for like 11 years now, I think. And when it came time to launch this program, I know there was no other partner that I wanted to work with. And so, I'm so grateful to Kate for answering the call and for her partnership and friendship over the years. He wasn't able to be here, but also Deputy Chief of Staff Greg Clay, I'd like to recognize. Not only was he a participant in 21st Century Leaders, but he has been on the advisory board, and so, it was so great to have his help throughout this initiative as well. Kate?
Thank you, Chandra. Thank you to the...
Thank you, Chandra. Thank you to the Atlanta City Council for this recognition for our youth. 21st Century Leaders has been around since 1989 with a mission to connect, transform, and inspire young people across the state of Georgia to really be leaders in their community schools and ultimately the workforce. And so that $150,000 grants we were able to provide with the support of the Mayor's Office went directly back into the city of Atlanta and the larger communities to really make change. Some of our greatest leaders are young people, and that's evident here today with the young people we have on stage and so many more across the city of Atlanta. So just want to congratulate our young people for the amazing and tireless work that they put in to making their communities more sustainable, healthier, and in a better place than when they found it. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabriel Barazer. I am a 16-year-old junior at Campbell High School, and I attend the International Baccalaureate Program over at Campbell. My project was converting hydroponics to aquaponics. And I just wanted to talk today about some of the impacts that this program has had on our community and myself as a student. In April of this year, we applied for about $4,000 to receive a grant. And we've used that money to connect our students and also reach out on social media to inform and work to generate food for the Atlanta food desert. So on social media, we have gotten around 22,000 views, which is the metric for interaction on our Instagram account, and we've had over 270 hours of volunteer work in our school and in our community just from students. That's been very obviously impactful in our community, and our system that we built is now housing over 70 plants, which we are growing to donate as produce, as well as nearly 40 fish, which we are also growing to eventually dispatch and donate. Another small thing I wanted to bring up was the importance of the youth. We felt very connected to the leadership from Ms. Beth, especially from our monthly meetings, and that guided us a lot. And I think that the investment that they made in us as the youth will pay off in the future, leadership of this city. And just as a final thank you, I just wanted to thank the city of Atlanta, Ms. Beth, Ms. Chandra, Ms. Hewitt, and Will and Alyssa, who are standing on my right. They stepped up for leadership when I had basketball practice, so that was great. And as well as my family and all the teachers and students who volunteered at my school. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you all so much. And so I will read the proclamation, and then we will get an official photo. And so the proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Atlanta is committed to bold, equitable, and community-driven climate action that safeguards the health, resilience, and future of all residents; and whereas Atlanta's youth have emerged as powerful leaders in advancing this mission, demonstrating exceptional vision, creativity, and determination in addressing the climate challenges facing their community. And the Atlanta Youth Climate Action Fund was established by the City of Atlanta Mayor's Office of Sustainability and Resilience to empower youth ages 15 to 24 to conceptualize and implement innovative climate solutions at the neighborhood level. And whereas funded by Bloomberg Philanthropies and administered in partnership with 21st Century Leaders, the Youth Climate Action Fund has provided micro grants ranging from $1,000 to $5,000 to support youth-led projects that advance Atlanta's sustainability and resilience goals. And the Atlanta Youth Climate Action Fund invested $150,000 in 30 youth-led project teams whose community-centered work engaged more than 1,500 young people across metro Atlanta. And these young leaders have executed projects that strengthen Atlanta's environmental stewardship and resilience, including tree planting, energy conservation, plastic reduction, community gardening, composting, recycling programs, and educational initiatives addressing electric vehicles, extreme heat, hydroponics, and reducing energy burden. And whereas Atlanta is proud to be one of the 100 cities worldwide participating in the Bloomberg Philanthropies Youth Climate Action Fund Initiative, a global effort that activates youth to shape a more sustainable and equitable future through local action. And whereas the collective achievements of Atlanta's youth embody the city's commitment to climate leadership, inspires community pride, and affirm the importance of uplifting young people as co-creators of long-term environmental progress. And now, therefore, it be proclaimed that we, the members of Atlanta City Council on behalf of the residents of Atlanta, do hereby declare December 1, 2025, as Atlanta Youth Climate Action Day in our great city, and extend our gratitude to the young leaders whose dedication, innovation, and service strengthens the city climate's resilience and pave the way towards a more sustainable and just future for all of us. Thank you so much. Signed by every member of City Council, along with our President Doug Shipman. Today is Atlanta Youth Climate Action Day in Atlanta. Thank you all so much for your service. And so now we'll all come up for a photo. We all love on each other, so let's come up. Members of council, please join me.
Thank you all very much. And next, we'll move to public comment. I'd like to remind everybody that everyone will have up to two minutes, unless they've been yielded time by someone else. You cannot yield from the podium. We do have many speakers today, so we'll want to keep it moving. First up today will be Amy the Chicken.
Howard. Councilmember Howard, I'm here for you. We are here to celebrate your big day, your last big day. Are you ready? I see. Well, get ready. Here we go. Happy trails to you until we meet again. Happy trails to you. Keep smiling until then. Who cares about the clouds when we're together? Just sing a song and enjoy the sunny weather. Happy trails to you until we meet again. But wait, there's more. Little if I stay here with you, boy, things couldn't be the same. I'm as free as a bird now, and this bird you cannot change. Lord knows I can't change, so fly high, free bird. Yeah. Thank you. I didn't see any lighters or phones, but anyway. And now, the end is near, and so you face the final curtain. My friends, I'll say it clear, I'll state my case of which I'm certain. You've lived a life that's full, you've traveled each and every highway. But nor much more than this, he did it his way. But hit the road, Jack, don't you come back no more, no more, no more, no more. Hit the road, Jack, don't you come back no more. Woo! All right. But there's a special song just for you. Is this mine going? Yeah? So, you ready? One more. Just one more, Howard. He's so excited. Hey, 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 Howard, you served ATL with grace. Let's celebrate this space. Oh, Howard Shook, you been around in the city of ATL. You hold your ground 24 years. You work so hard. Now it's time to raise the glass and throw a yard. You've made laws, you've made deals, fought traffic taxes, potholes, and o'er the fields. Now it's time to rest your pen, 'cause you done, Howard, now the fun begins. Page two.
Time has expired. Sorry, your time has expired.
Howard's wisdom, your calm demeanor, but hey, we're just glad you're a people pleaser. Goodbye, Howard Shook, you served so fine. With every zoning vote, you cross that line. 24 years in the game, but now you're out of here, there's still our flame. Luck, 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 you're flying high. Captain retirement wave and wave goodbye. You'll be sipping tea, not reading bills, no more council meetings, no more city thrills.
Thank you.
Remember you deserve a fear even when you're out here retirement gear. Now go on, Howard, take your rest. You did your best, and oh, you were the best. Goodbye, Howard Shook, you served so fine. Roll the bet, lines buckhead, now's your time. 24 years, job well done. Retiring, but hey, you've already won. Luck, 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 Howard goodbye. We'll miss you lots. Don't even cry. You served us well, and you got your wings. Now you're free, Howard. Spread those wings.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful retirement, Howard, from Atlanta City Council.
Mr. Shook, your name was called. Do you want to respond? Okay. Thank you. Next, next will be Jabari Gibson. Jabari Gibson? Due to yield a time, you'll have up to four minutes today.
How y'all doing today? I'm here on behalf of a very close friend of mine who shot 17 times in the back. And I'm really, we're really here for justice, 'cause I don't understand how could a person be causing you any kind of harm if they backtalked you? If my backtalked you, can I do anything to do with my backtalk? So I don't understand why it's been no justice. The police is still working. Like, 'cause if I was to leave here today and shoot one of y'all fellow, I was in the back, y'all gonna have a all-out manhunt for me. All I'm here is asking for justice, 'cause guess where? He was one of our loved ones, and we feel like, you know, if it were us, we would be in jail right now facing murder charges. He's still out here free, enjoying Thanksgiving with his family and all that. So that's all I wanted to ask. I'm asking for justice. That's all I'm asking for. You know, that's what we're all here for. We're humble, we're peaceful, and all we want is justice. That's all I got to say.
Next will be Joseph Reed. You'll have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon. We all here today just to demand a lot of transparency from you guys, demand accountability from APD, GBI, Fulton County, all the agencies, whoever's possible. We're here to demand transparency, accountability. We need answers. How is it that it's possible this officer is able to go through this many violations and still be on the force, working off duty? Shot him in the back 17 times in the back and buttock area. So we would just like some answers, accountability, and we demand transparency for it. So we would just like some answers, accountability, and we demand transparency for it. Please, that's all we asking. We come peaceful. We come willingly. We just need answers. We need to know what's going on. We understand there's a lot of investigations going on. We need answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Madre Lofton. You have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I am Madre Lofton, organizing director for Georgia Federation of Public Service Employees. I'm looking forward to working with all of our city departments to make Atlanta an even better place to live and work. We will be providing our official state of the city from the employee's perspective in the new coming year. Do well and be well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Allen Lee. You'll have up to two minutes today.
Good afternoon, members of the council, and wishing Councilman Howard Shook well in his retirement. I had the occasion to serve on a committee appointed by both, he and I were appointed by then Mayor Kasim Reed. So I appreciate his leadership, and I've probably been around about 24 years with him, just flying low. So congratulations. I wanted to come by this afternoon and invite the entire council to Harper Archer Elementary School. There is a story to be told at Harper Archer. There's a story to be told about four little kids who defied all expectations in terms of their reading bowl. I had the occasion to travel with them to Macon, Georgia, and to watch them not play football, not play basketball, not run, jump, or sing, but to show their wit and their intellect and their reading comprehension. And they went toe to toe with the best of them. Keep in mind, the teams consist of 10 people. They only had four, and they were relevant and they were powerful. They finished second place all in the District of APS. But far too often, we don't tell that story. So I'll be joined by the superintendent, the state representative of that area, Inga Willis, our very own city council member of that area, Andrea Boone. But I would love to see each of you to take hope and joy to our kids and let them know that they belong in their real. And I'm sure the community would love to see you as well. Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Next will be Darius Blackwell. You have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Darius Blackwell. Linton Blackwell is my cousin. All right. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the family, on behalf of my cousin, Linton Blackwell. We're here seeking the truth, accountability, and justice. On the day Linton Blackwell was shot, Atlanta Police Officer, his name is Gerald Walker, he shot my cousin in the back. Unjustified use of lethal force. And until the city provide answers, we cannot have peace. Today, I'm seeking and asking this council, the police department, for transparency. First, we want to know what's specific evidence support the officer's decision to use lethal force against Mr. Linton Blackwell. Not summary, not edited footage. We want full documents, including body cam footage, witness statements, and officer's use of force. Second, ask this city to explain whether the officer's actions align with Atlanta Police Department policy, which part of the policy justified the shooting of Linton Blackwell. If no policy was followed, we expect to be acknowledged. Third, we demand that the independent investigator, not internal, not handled by the police or the people connected to the same department, an outside agency. If the shooting was justified, prove it. If it was not, be honest about it. Fourth, we want to know the duty of the status of the officer who shot Linton Blackwell. Whether this officer has his histories of complaints of prior force incidents. The public deserves transparency. Fifth, we ask better communication from the city. Our family should not have to chase information during the most devastating moment of our lives. We deserve respect. We deserve answers, and we deserve the truth. Finally, I want to say this. What happened to my cousin, Linton Blackwell, should never happen to another family in this city. We need real reform, real training, and real accountability. Not another tragedy. Now, we are here to fight this city. We are here to fight for justice. We're here to make Linton Blackwell's life matter. And this does not make sense. He was shot 17 times in the back. I don't care if he did have a gun.
Thank you.
If he turned around, you don't have no reason to shoot him in the back. You could have tased him. You could have shot him two times in the leg, not 17 times in the back. So we want answers.
Thank you.
For y'all don't know his name, his name is Linton Blackwell.
Thank you. Next will be Erica Bootry. Give my apologies if I get anybody's name wrong. Please do correct it for the record. You'll have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Erica Bootry. I'm the mother of Linton's twin daughters, Destiny and Dynasty Blackwell. And I'm here on their behalf. My daughter's father, Linton, was shot 17 times in the back by an Atlanta Police Officer in 17 shots. I say that quietly, not because I accept it, but because even saying it out loud feels unreal. It's like a quiet kind of heartbreak, the kind that shows up at every milestone he won't be there for. The first day of their junior year, their next birthday, walking across the stage without him in the crowd. Those moments that should have been filled with pride will not always carry a shadow because he was a girl dad and he never missed a moment in their life. 17 bullets. I want every person here to hear that and understand the violence behind it. That is not protection. That is not policing. I feel as though that is a decision, a violent reckless decision that the officer took, and he took away my children's father. And what breaks me even more is knowing that this didn't have to happen. The officer who killed Linton had previous sustained violations. He had a pattern. There were warnings on top of warnings. And he was allowed to keep his badge, keep his gun, and walk freely into a moment that ended my children's chance to grow up with their father. I refuse to raise my daughters in a city where an officer with a violent history is allowed to keep hurting people until someone dies. So I'm here because my daughters deserve a city that acknowledges what happened to their father. They deserve transparency. They deserve answers. They deserve accountability, real accountability, not delays, not closed doors or excuses. My daughters deserve better. Linton deserve better, and Atlanta deserves better.
Next will be Yashika Blackwell. Latisha, sorry. Latish Blackwell. Next will be Semorial Hurst. You have up to two minutes.
How y'all doing today, city council? I'm here on behalf of Linton Blackwell. And what happened to my cousin that day shouldn't have happened. This accountability gotta be stood for anything. You in the court of law, they gotta convict you with accountability. So it should be the same thing. We ain't gonna rest till it's over. The only thing we want is some answers. That's it. We ain't coming with no home. We coming with peace. We just want answers. You got kids, and you was loved very dearly. We got pictures on with the mayor. He was a good dude, man. And get shot 17 times. Come on, man. Y'all human being, that don't, ain't no police supposed to shoot you no 17 times. And if you ain't shooting at him not even once, and you turn your back and you get shots, cause you say you seen him put something behind his back? That's what we got to tell these daughters? That shit, that ain't right, man. That's not right. That's all we want is some accountability. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Marilyn Lawrence. Is she here?
She's outside. She don't wanna talk.
Okay. That's, no, no. She has to be the one to speak. Sorry, you can't take somebody else's time. Marilyn Lawrence. Henry Jordan. You have up to two minutes.
Give my thanks to God, everyone that's here. If my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and will heal their land. Second Chronicles 7, chapter 14, verse. This first stand is a high expression of God's loving readiness to hear the prayers of a repentant people. I cannot work your job, Jesus created income, not me. Not everyone that says unto me, Lord, loth, should enter the kingdom of heaven, but he that doeth the will of my Father, which is in heaven. St. Matthew 7, 21st verse. Not everyone professing Christ is genuinely saved. No weapon that is formed against thee shall prosper. And every tongue that shall rise against thee in judgment, thou shall condemn. This is the heritage of the servants of the Lord. Righteousness is of me, said the Lord. Isaiah 54, chapter 17, verse. He is the redeemer of all men, and yet the same one who is the holy one of Israel. Good beloved, avenge not yourselves, but rather give place unto wrath. For it is written, vengeance is mine. I will repay, said the Lord. Romans 12, chapter 18, verse. Give place unto wrath. Paul, post Deuteronomy 32nd, chapter 35th, verse, to show that God only has the right to avenge, and he certainly will avenge. God, see your hearts. He see your deeds. He see your works. And God has condemned sin. He bring judgment on sin, not me. I'm just a witness of what God can do. You gotta fear God rather than man. God has no power. He sold for this power. He sold for the money that God created in me, and you say you get it, and they want me to work for you. How foul do that sound? You got the money, not me.
Thank you. Next will be Lawanda Ha- Hash. You have up to two minutes today.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Lawanda Hash. I come on behalf of the Blackwell family. I'm here for my cousin, justice for my cousin, Linton Blackwell. Our family is demanding answers from the city of Atlanta after the unjustly shooting of our beloved loved one. Linton Blackwell, we're gonna continue to repeat it. He was assassinated 17 times by the Atlanta Police Department, by an Atlanta Police Officer. So we want full release of body cam footage, an independent investigation, the officer's complaint and disciplinary history, transparency, accountability, and communication with our family. Real reform to prevent this from happening to anyone ever again. Linton deserves better. His children deserve better. Our family deserve better, and our community deserves better. We will not stop. We will not rest until the truth is told. Justice for Linton Blackwell.
Next will be Grady Blackwell. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon, council, councilmember. I am here on behalf of my nephew, Hunter Blackwell. That's my brother child. And he got shot 17 times. I don't know what happened. I know that he had an obligation in the clubs. They followed him out to his vehicle and say he saw my son, my nephew put something in his pants, and he shot my nephew 17 times. Councilmember, you can kill a bear. You shoot them 17 times in the back. And I don't think my nephew deserved to be shot 17 times in the back. If he in the wrong, why he didn't shoot me in the front? Why he all the booty have be in the back? Can someone tell me that, please? I would like justice, and I would like to know why. If he wrong, he wrong, but he do not judge, judge, gets shot 17 times in the back. Now booty hit me in the front. Not one. The police followed him out to the car and shot him. And that's cold blooded murder. Thank y'all, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Next will be Mashawi Eichner. Mashawi Eichner. Next will be Janice Jordan. Up to two minutes.
Hello. Good afternoon to everyone on the panel. I stand in the gap on behalf of the Evans family. I'm a close friend to the family. And as we have all stated, we're here for justice. 17 shots is unacceptable. It would be a great deal if Andre Dickerson was sent in one of these chairs on the panel. He took pictures with the mayor. He did great deeds in the community for children's. He had relatives that work in his school system, so he stand for something. He stood for a lot of things. But we won't stand here and fall for anything. We demand justice. We thank you for your time. You will continue to see the faces that stood before this panel on today. Until the day that we get justice and the officer is behind bars. That's what we're asking. Nothing less, but we asking for more. He deserved to be penalized for what he done, for taking a black man unarmed, back turned 17 times to the bank. Only if one of you guys was standing in shoes of his loved ones to come stand before this poor pick and ask for justice. All we want is justice, peace, love, and happiness. So from me to you and my family, we just want justice, and I thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Maisy Thompson. Maisy Thompson. Due to yield a time, you'll have up to four minutes today.
Hi, everybody. God, I hate coming up here, to be honest. I'll state the obvious. Atlanta has a police violence problem. What we don't talk about enough is that Atlanta has a police narrative problem. When APD kills somebody, the first statement that is released is not meant to inform the public. It is meant to manage the public's reaction and perception of events, just in case the facts don't pan out in the officer's favor. APD killed Linton Blackwell, and the narrative that we got first was that he was disruptive, combative, put a gun in his belt, noncompliant, all of these phrases to lull us into thinking that somehow shooting him 17 times was, in some world, reasonable. It's not. And I heard some family members say, what was the justification? There isn't one. When APD killed Jimmy Atchison, the story that we got was armed robbery, armed robbery suspect killed in task force operation while evading arrest. None of that was true. He was chased, cornered, shot in the face with his hands up while he was surrendering. He was not armed, and there was no robbery. That wasn't a misunderstanding. It was the story they chose to tell you, knowing that it was false. This is a pattern. Police write the narrative of their own violence. Mainstream media repeats it. Leadership as a whole, including this body, protects it. Following the release of the body cam footage of Deacon Johnny Holloman's murder, the mayor released a pathetic statement. End quote, he said, "Any incident where a life is lost, taken would have been more accurate, concerns me. That is why I immediately directed APD to conduct..." That is why I immediately directed APD to conduct a top to bottom review and evaluation of themselves." Phew. The review found that the officer failed to have a supervisor present. He said nothing about the violence. He did not acknowledge that Deacon Johnny Holloman was bullied, beaten, tased, tackled, pinned, begging for his life until his body gave out. That is murder. And these families who come here and speak or speak out are expected to maintain decorum and be poised and composed in the chamber that approved the budget that is paying the officers who killed their family. I really thought I had so much more time. I'll be honest, I'll end with this. If, if somebody did to my dad, or my mom, or my brother, what was done to Linton Blackwell, Alexia Christian, Jimmy Atchison, Javis Benjamin, Anthony Hill, Shawlee Tilson, Rayshard Brooks, Devon Anderson, we can keep going. I could light this city on fire and not feel a thing, and that is real. You know that is real.
Thank you. Next will be Jimmy Evans. Due to your time, you have four minutes.
Good day. I'm Jimmy Evans, cousin of Linton Blackwell. Hmm. I ask myself, why am I here? Why my family is, just to tell y'all what y'all already know? I mean, do they say something about y'all, y'all characters, you know what I'm saying? As a people or the law? You know what I'm saying? Why am I here? Well, y'all already got all the answer. Y'all got everything that we got, damn near, right? So I say, why, as a, okay, we pay taxes. So we paying taxes for them, for them come out there and just murder us, 'cause that's what's going on, you know what I'm saying? And we come here to speak on situations and don't nothing happen. I go, you go, y'all go home after this. I ain't gonna care about what happened to my little cousin, like, straight up, unless it's happened to one of y'all relatives. Then y'all better, y'all be ready to do something about it. But why I should be there doing, go there for, when I paid taxes for you all to, to, to put them in handcuffs? Why we all, we gotta be handcuffed? We go out and murder somebody, but it's, it's like they're exempt from their actions. You know what I'm saying? I paid taxes for them to learn, to better, um, you know, to handle the situation when they dealing with people. But you see what the outcome be, you know what I'm saying? So I ask myself, why am I here? When y'all already got the answers? What y'all gonna do about moving forward? 'Cause this been going on for decades. I'm forty-eight. Like, this been going on for decades in Atlanta. Like, when the change gonna happen? Until I get old and gray, until I keep paying out my taxes, I'm like, I do? When then we gonna get change? Like, for real? I'm cool, that's all I had to say, you know what I'm saying? Like, y'all gotta do better, man. 'Cause shoot, vice versa, we get the act, and y'all ain't gonna want that. Y'all gonna wanna, they gonna, y'all gonna use every resource y'all got in y'all power of all my tax dollars to goddamn come at me a hundred times stronger than goddamn you going at them a hundred times stronger. I mean, come on, that make it make sense? If the people, if the, if the power, okay, if the power is, the people got the power, we need to get rid of y'all and put somebody else in y'all place for goddamn, just to get some action. Like, for real? Make it make sense to me? Thank you for your time, though.
Thank you. Next will be Jawaher, Jawaher Charwani. You have up to two minutes.
Hello, counsel, everybody. My name is Jawah Charwani. I'm a community activist. And I just learned about this today on a post. This is very sad. This is very cowardly from the officer, the one they get trained by the IDF soldiers in Palestine. And they learn, they teach them to shoot, to kill, not to save. Seventeen bullets. A coward officer should be locked, not just behind bars, should be in a mental hospital, never be able to get out. Not be on the street with a gun. He's holding the gun. He could have shot him in his leg or in his back. But I just learned today that he's actually a relative of T V Atkinson. So how many time these families, all, all of us as a humanity, or black, our black community getting targeted, our black people getting targeted every single day? I can't breathe, George Floyd, Sonia Massey in Chicago. I, I rebuke you in the name of Jesus, and then she got you, I'm gonna shoot you in the F head. So could you please turn your officer, turn, re, I, I, I'm really, I'm really disturbed by this? Because this is so much on us as a community to handle. They lost a father, they lost a community member, an uncle, and, and, and everything. So please, and we always looking at the time. We have due time. Our people, they don't have any time. They're just sitting here grieving them. Nobody has time. So please, train your officer. If there's a crime, whatever, shoot, whatever you tase, or whatever the, any you do, not to kill, to save a life, to save another human being in our community. I understand everybody has, you have a job and you're sitting here, but we don't come here to just go to a therapy session to speak. We come here because we have faith in all of you that you need to do something. You need to do something about our community and our people, okay? Justice for Linton, justice for every soul got lost in United States and outside the United States. We're not gonna stop until justice is served.
Thank you. Next, next will be Tessa Evans. Next will be Timothy Coleman. You have two minutes. Ms. Evans, you have two minutes.
Y'all already know why the fuck we here. Y'all know this. Y'all know this. We ain't had no update. I went to the GBI building to, um, talk to someone about an update. No answers. I called that number. No one called me back yet. Nobody called me back yet, you know?
And they said we are suffering. This is our brother. We are the two oldest. We done been through so much.
It's her time.
We together. We together.
Can we speak together?
Nope. I'm sorry, only the people who signed up, that's the rules, guys, that's the way it works.
The bird was up here singing and doing all that shit, but we can't speak together.
You have your time. Next will be Timothy Coleman. Ms. Coleman, you have up to two minutes.
This is a mockery, man. This is a circus. How do y'all let a bird come here for five minutes and speak? And these people are speaking on behalf of somebody who got shot seventeen times? It would've took y'all seventeen seconds to surround our house with police officers, we would've shot one of y'all's. If we would've put one of them in the ground, they would've had us surrounded with everything, helicopters, all you know, every resource in Atlanta, Georgia. Y'all look at us like we just, nobody, nothing. Y'all treating Linton like he was just a dog in the street. But y'all let Jared Walker just be out here just walking around, going on about his way, just doing his thing, laughing, giggling about this shit? Y'all about up here about giggling about this shit? It's not funny, man. It's not funny at all. Seventeen shots to the back, what if it was your son? What if it was your mama, your brother, your sister, your uncle? Ms. P, Theo, Billy, Dunn, they shouldn't have to go through that. Them twins shouldn't have to go through that. They shouldn't have to sit up here and stand in front of y'all to tell y'all to do the right goddamn thing. Do the right damn thing. This y'all city too. Hopefully it don't happen to one of your nephews, one of your sons. Hopefully it don't happen to one of y'all. Then y'all see how we feel. You'll see how they feel. This is not a joke, man. This is not a goddamn joke. Seventeen times in the back? He should've been locked up in seventeen seconds, just like y'all would've had us locked up. It's wrong. You know it's wrong. Why we waiting on the GBI? Why are we waiting on the GBI? Y'all know, y'all get the call, y'all gonna make the call, the DA gonna make the last call. Lock him up. Point blank period, lock him up. 'Cause we only got so much time before we go into a rage. I don't think y'all really want them problems. They're just being honest. We mad, man, but we trying to hold it together. But you sit up here and get a bird, five minute, hold on, you get a bird, five minutes? But when somebody talking about somebody getting killed, you cutting them off? Hey, he ain't got no more time. You don't care.
Time is expired.
You don't give a damn, Doug, shit. None of y'all don't care. But it's okay. It's okay, but we gonna wake y'all ass up. I promise you that.
Thank you. Next will be, next will be LaShanta Hape, or Hype? Nope. Next will be Nikki Bugs. Next will be Nikki Bugs. You can't do that, I'm sorry, explain that. You can't give time unless it's on the list. I'm sorry. Mister? Which one? Mister Lewis.
I think what they're trying to do, I wanna make sure we do it right. I know you have latitude, president. And what they're trying to do is if a person is a little nervous to speak because they, they wanna be able to transfer their minutes. The folks have both signed up. And so sometimes I know we've allowed, when a person signs up, and if they don't wanna talk, they can give their time to someone else. And I wanna give my time to Mr. Bond and let him respond on that, 'cause my gentleman just said he want Mr. Bond's help.
Mr. Bond.
Thank you, Councilor Lewis. Thank you, Mr. President. By making a point of order, it, it was recognized that there had been an allowance previously in the public comment where time had elapsed and there was, uh, an allowance for the speaker to continue almost double the time for the minutes. So my point of order is that we should, that has set a precedent for this meeting, and that those who would want, like to continue to speak in their time should be allowed to do so. Just as earlier in the meeting, um, I'm sorry, Charles, to bring you into this, uh, but even with pro forma, there's supposed to only be fifteen minutes, and went on for two hours. So allowing the time to continue, that precedent has all, already been set. And so if there is an individual who would like to give their time, I believe it is proper and appropriate to allow them to do so. And, and if it is ruled that it is not, I would like to be recognized after that to make a motion to allow them to do so after that.
Mr. Bond, I do entertain a motion. We do, your name is consent?
Second.
It's been moved.
Moved by Mr. Bond, seconded by Mr. Lewis to suspend the rules to allow this gentleman to, tell me your name, sir.
My name is Don Evans.
To allow this gentleman to speak? Is there any discussion?
Yes. So first I wanna say, discussion. So the time that he's, I wanna make sure I clarify, the time that gentleman, is Mr. Green's brother is asking for, is actually the time for people who've already signed up, who don't want to speak. So he, actually, I seen two people. One is his sister who sat down, and one, her cousin who sat, who didn't get to speak, Ms. Letishson in the back. That would increase his minutes by itself to six minutes, just by that. That's what my request was first, 'cause I, and then I'm still with Mr. Bond on that request as well.
Councilor Collins.
Two things, just a question for clarity. Are you ask, so are you asking to extend the time for someone that has already spoken? Or the ability for that person that signed up to give their time to someone else? Those are two different, those are two different requests.
Well, the, the motion that's been made is to waive the rules to allow him to speak, uh, because the president-
Allow who to speak?
This gentleman here.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Don Evans.
Okay, so-
So that will deal with, since the president didn't rule on my point of order, I made the motion. And so now the motion is-
But your point of order was based on the family that did not wanna speak being able to, well, the young, the young men and, and women that came wanting more time to speak, that was your point of order to allow them more time? But now you, you're, you're asking for, well, let me explain why that matters. Well, let, let, let me, let me explain why that matters. Because we have, there are, let me explain why I'm asking a question for clarity, whether it's an issue for, for you or not, because we have a request that come at all council meetings for that. So what I am asking, his point of order was something else, he's asking for something else. So I am asking for clarity, so I know what side I am supporting as a, as a council member, that's it. My second, so that's what, that's my clarity for you. Your point of order was something, you're asking for something else. If your motion is to allow Mr. Evans to sign up, then what I am gonna ask for, anyone else that wanna speak that didn't get a chance to sign up, they should be able to do that as well, because I'm quite sure there are other family members that are here that didn't sign up that may wanna speak as well. So, so I'm going to, I'm going to extend it in that, that, that way. So that's the first part. My second part, in terms of Mr. Coleman, I don't think he's no longer here, but for, I, I think it's extremely important for our community, 'cause I understand your, your, I understand how hurt you are when you say, yes, I do, 'cause I lost a cousin that was, that was shot six times. I lost, I, I lost two cousins, one that was shot six times. So, so, so I do know. What, 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 what I'm saying is, what I'm saying, no, 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 what I-
Ma'am, can we move on, ma'am?
No, what I'm, what I'm asking is, Mr. Coleman asked the question, I'm gonna ask, answer his question.
You gonna go back and forth with him?
Okay. I, I defer to you, Mr. President. Yeah, I am. I'm, I defer.
Thank you.
Well, the discussion on the motion to suspend the rules, we do this meeting, your name is consent without objection, any objection?
My objection is, I would want it to be expand, extended to the other family members that did, that also didn't get a chance to sign up.
That's not the motion, you can leave that on for like later.
If they haven't signed up, ma'am, I made it clear to them, if they haven't signed up, they're not gonna speak.
Mr. Coleman, just let us work through our process.
All the family members gonna speak. If nobody sign up, they're not gonna speak. Thank you.
Okay.
We do this meeting, your name is consent without objection, any objection? Ma'am Clark, please sign the county names and send on the motion to suspend the rules.
Fourteen yeas, there are nays?
Yeah, I, I understand. I, I.
All right, Mr. Coleman, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you six minutes.
I'm Mr. Evans.
I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, I'm gonna give you six minutes.
All right, thanks, sir. Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Don Evans. I'm the oldest brother of Linton Blackwell. And for my brother to be shot seventeen times in his back, it don't make no sense at all. No sense at all. And one thing I know about my brother, he's not gonna go and put no gun in the lower part, he's black, back part. He not, he never walk around, he, he keep a gun on him, he never put nothing in his back. So for him to follow him and shoot him is unjustified. Ain't no way you can explain that to me. Ain't no way you can keep, is trying to make me believe that. And this man still walking around, right to this day. I couldn't enjoy my Thanksgiving. I was broke down. My, my grandbaby keeps me going. But my grandbaby weren't able to keep me going this day. My nieces don't wanna see a police. Go to the mall the other day, see a police start crying, ready to go. How do that feel? From the start of it, we are part of the missing and murdered children. Africa Evans was the second missing and murdered children here in Atlanta. That was my uncle. That was my uncle. And it's been years and years and years that's been going on. My grandmother fought, fought, fought till her death. Set that fault to her death, thinking my uncle gonna walk back in the door. 'Cause Wayne, we, right around the corner around here, he's around on that wall. He's around on that wall. My grandmother, I lost my grandmother in two thousand. I lost my grandma in twenty, no, twenty twenty. Turned around. Turned around, lost my auntie. Turned around, lost my uncle. I turned around, lost my mama. I got a nephew. My baby brother's son that I raised all his life, he got killed last year. My brother just died on the same day. I buried my nephew last year on the same day. I deal with somewhere- I deal with so much, I go through so much to keep my family together. I love my family. I fight hard for my family. I work every day, I work at Drew Charter School. We was raised in East Lake Meadow, where they just was up here talking to y'all about. We was born and raised in Little Vietnam, from the dirt. Miss Eva Davis, I stayed right across the street from Miss Eva Davis. She was like a mother to us. We stayed in the household. Y'all know East Lake Meadow was Little Vietnam. You couldn't come out there. Post, the postman didn't even wanna walk to the mailbox, deliver mail checks. It was hard for us. Mister Shook, it was hard for us. Very hard. I appreciate everything that's been going on, but this right here, it's not, it can't happen. It can't happen. This man still walking around right to this day. Right to this day. Right to this day. If I was to go out here and shoot somebody, do anything wrong, the federal, the GBI, they gonna call in the Marines and everybody. If I was to shoot one of the officers, come on, man. Count, county, 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 four to county, GBI, FBI, every, every county. Look at when they, when they chasing folks. How many officers jumped behind another set of officers? Now, what's going on? They out here doing high speed chasing, killing people. The, the state patrols, they, they catching charges, chasing, they chase somebody and run you off the road. The person they chasing run you off the road, kill you. But they wait. They get away. I mean, it's, it's justified in some way to them, but why keep chasing somebody if they're at a certain amount of speed? People, like, we out here going home in traffic. We out here going home and all of a sudden, I can't move fast enough for this car. Yes, coming at 100 miles per hour and it'll kill me and my kids, it'll kill whatever. Make it make sense to me. I get up faithfully every morning, faithfully. 4:30 in the morning to be at Drew Charter School at 6 o'clock in the morning. I work at Drew Charter School, been down there for 10 years, been in my neighborhood all my life. I was born and raised there and I'm still right there, talking to my, talking to these young ones. I done been through everything it is they been through. But I'm out here feeding it to them every day. I have to talk to these kids every day. But what am I to talk to them about right now? What am I to talk to them? I still go in there and do it. Because I feel like that's my script. My brother don't keep, he gonna tell me, keep going. He gonna tell me to keep going. I can't keep going. I can't, I hurt every day. My wife sits in the house with me every day. I'm broke down. I'm broke down. My family is hurting. We want justice. And I bleed, I plead and beg with y'all. These, everybody ain't, everybody ain't wrong. My back turn, I'm gone. You walk behind me and shoot me in my back 17 times, it's not right. Can we get some justice, please? Can we please get some justice for my parents? Please.
Next will be Nikki Bugs. Due to your time, you have up to four minutes.
Wow. My condolences to the Blackwell family. I don't know the specifics, but my condolences. I'd like to have my time restarted, please. I'd like to have my time restored to the original number, please. I may not need it, but still. All right, good afternoon, everyone. I am here to speak about the Landmark condominium. Mister Shook, thank you for your conversation about a week ago and congratulations. It is four years and five months to today. Today is December 1st that we've been fighting this battle. And had anyone from the council at least passed an ordinance, that would have protected us somehow in some way in some capacity. I come here every week, twice to three times a week, to get you to truly understand what, what trouble that we're in. We have proprietary, predatory property investors that are, that have taken over the building at this point. Taken over the building. We're assessed with exorbitant fines, assessments, capital assessments. We have people that are upwards over $12,000 in debt due to this group. We're losing our homes. Foreclosures, liens. What more can possibly be said? We have been advised, oh, well, why don't you move? It's easier said than done, but why don't they move? They moved into our building. Now we're trapped in a building, we're under one roof. So we're subjected to the drugs, the prostitution, and whatever else is going on in the building. And we have no recourse. We've gone to every governmental agency, jurisdiction, companies, businesses, and everyone says go to city council. We did come to you last because we felt, we knew that you could do so, just so much. Everybody can only do, but so much. But if we can get you all together, we would not be in this spot. So now we have foreclosures. We have a xenophobic package, dead bodies, lunched bodies, defamation lawsuit, frivolous fines. I didn't have Thanksgiving. There's some people that could not afford to go home because of what's happening. You have failed us tremendously. The entire state has. So we get to come home to new investors coming and purchasing in the building because they know what's happening. This is our home. I get to come home every day to this. But we get no response. If we did anything heinous in the building, then, you know, like the Blackwells said, we'd be in jail by now. If we did a quarter of what these people are doing, we would have been in jail by now. I'd rather come here and ask you, what can I do to help you? Can I be a part of your team to help uplift and, and build Atlanta? Right now it just seems as if everyone's concerned about the money coming in, the, the investors coming in, the guests coming in, the stitch, the belt line, the money coming in. But nobody's looking at how it's affecting us. The job and the game for them is to morally bankrupt us. And yes, we mentioned Airbnb, that was not enough. That was not enough. And we kept hearing about investigations. Not sure what investigations was, the investigations about us or about them? But nothing has been done. There are people that can't afford to move. I'm sure if they would have, they would have done it by now. But then that gives these, these people the upper hand. No one should be able to come into a community and upheaval the entire community and then buy up the property. No one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Jimmy Hill. Due to your time, you'll have up to six minutes today.
Hey, good afternoon. Oh, man. 17 times in the back. How you justify that? Then in Blackwell, I usually come to speak about my son Jim Adson, who was also murdered by Atlanta police. It'll be seven years, dang where the 27th. What you seeing from my family today? It's rage, it's anger, it's pain. From the tears. You know, they said, no, there's no, there's no book on how not to become a victim of police brutality. This book done made a, a believe out of me. You know, my cousin, Lynn Blackwell, should have been allowed to make it back home to her, to, 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 two twin daughters who were waiting on him. But obviously, Atlanta police officer Jared Walker had other ideas. How you shoot somebody 17 times in the back? 14, three times below, below in the butt out, at, at the butt out, and, and, and up a little bit. 14 times, center mass. Center mass. Officers know that headshot and center mass shooters are most likely to kill. One shot would have killed him. 14 times? Now, my little cousin Lynn Blackwell deserved, he deserved, he deserved better. He deserved to be alive today. You know, is there anybody on this board? Is there any kind of compassion? Is there any? And, and when it comes to city leaders in Atlanta, I call them misleaders. Because that's what they're doing, misleading the people, not giving a damn about the, about the masses. But is there anybody on this board? And, and, and Michael Bond, you know, man, you just did a prayer video a couple of months ago. But is anybody on this board? Is anybody sitting up there? Is there any integrity, dignity, character? A godly principles left among anybody up there? You know, like I said, my cousin deserved better. And Atlanta police, which is a mostly black police force, reports more instances of excessive force and police killing than most other departments in the country. Nine out of 10 people killed by Atlanta police are black. And guess what? You continue to get a pay raise. Atlanta police, they don't honor, they don't, Atlanta Police Department, they don't honor. They, they, they do not honor their policies. That's what was shown in my son Jim Adson case. That was shown in Catherine Johnson on the box drug raid. 17 times. What if Linton Blackwell was your son? Or your brother, or your father? You know, and Atlanta City Council, on my mayor, Norwood, I think this happened in your district. If, if, if I'm correct. The Five Paces Bar. I think it happened in your district. And after seeing and, 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 and search for information concerning this bar, why is this bar still in existence? You had a, a report from NBC News where two guys, two white guys got robbed, drugged in their drink, got robbed over 20, $30,000. You have a numerous amount of complaints. So, but make, ask this question, why wasn't Linton Blackwell really killed? Would it silence him? Did he see something he once supposed to see? Why was this officer even on the force? Knowing that he had a number of complaints against him? Against standard procedures? Six out of seven standard procedures, and he's still on probation. Why was he still an officer? You know, it seem like Atlanta police, I've been coming here almost seven years. It seem like Atlanta police don't seem to take, our department don't take things seriously. And they, they, it don't seem like neither you take things serious when it come to Atlanta Police Department. The biggest gang in Georgia. A gang with no principles. A gangs that take you out by enemy necessary. So, like today, you, only thing you're seeing is rage. You're seeing rage, you're seeing anger, you're seeing everything from all my family. And it hurts. None of us got to enjoy Thanksgiving. None of us, I know we ain't gonna enjoy Christmas. What about his next birthday? And not just our family, his friends, because he was close with a lot of us. So, I'm not up here asking you to, 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 to hold this officer accountable. I'm demanding you hold this officer accountable. See, that's the problem, we been asking too much. We been asking. And you, you got responsibilities that you trying to step up and, and, and do your duty, do your responsibilities. It's more to it than just handing out proclamation, or, or photo ops. You know, my, my cousin Lynn Blackwell, he was a human being, man. He was a human being. And he deserved better. 17 times in the back. And when you look at the area, and when you look at the reports, when you look at the reports, you'll see all the shots were close together, like somebody was just standing over and just shooting. He wasn't killed. He wasn't murdered. He was executed. He was executed. And he, and he, and he deserved better. His twins deserved some kind of, it's about accountability. And that's what Atlanta is missing. That's what Atlanta City Council is missing. You do everything else, but what about accountability? What about holding these officers accountable? What about holding this officer accountable?
Time is expired.
You can, you can start today by firing this officer. You can start today by demanding, demanding a, a, a video cam footage. You can start the day, uh, uh, by...
Thank you, Mister Hill.
You can start the day just by standing up for truth and justice.
Thank you. Next will be Bianca Garcia. You'll have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon and my condolences to the Blackwell family. My name is Bianca Garcia and I'm a constituent of District 1. I'm actually here today to voice my opposition to the TAD extension, the Tax Allocation District Extension. Because I believe it is critically important that we reevaluate this approach to developing our city. And we must develop a better, more concrete plan for where those funds are coming from and how they will be used to best help the people of our city in Atlanta. When I first learned about the tax allocation districts, the TADS, was relatively recently, and I was incredibly surprised to learn that the money being used for these private developments is being pulled away from public services and our Atlanta public school system. It's wild to me that we would be pulling funds that are intended to educate and support our children, the next generation, essentially using it for gentrification projects around the city. That is absurd. And we should instead be taxing corporations and developers to pay their fair share in taxes and use those funds to support developments in our more underserved areas of the city. Extending the West Side TAD, for example, would be a massive transfer of wealth from Atlanta to the Gulch billionaires, who would gain an estimated $200 million from extending the TAD to 2055. That's money deprived from our Atlanta public schools to benefit LA billionaire real estate developers. Additionally, the Atlantic Station TAD is an example of a pure private development project that has no community benefit. So these TADS have not proven to reduce poverty or help our lower income neighbors. Atlanta must be a city for the people first, not for developers and corporations. And I strongly urge the council to vote against extending the TADS as they currently stand. Prioritize reevaluating the approach to where we're getting our funding, specifically excluding pulling funding from Atlanta Public Schools and instead taxing our city's luxury properties to pay their fair share. And lastly, devising a concrete plan with goals and a timeline for development in today's underserved areas. I look forward, I thank you for your time and consideration and look forward to being involved as a constituent to helping devise that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be AJ, AJ Strawn. You'll have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is AJ Strom. I'm a local union side labor lawyer and a resident of the Piedmont Heights neighborhood. I put it in my schedule to come speak today after I learned about the proposed blanket 25-year extension of the TADS. I want to first thank the city council and the mayor's office for listening to the community and delaying the vote on extending the TADS to next year to allow for greater transparency. As an attorney, my schedule does not often allow me the time to provide public comment. So consequently, even with the delay of the vote, I felt it was imperative that I still come today to share my concerns about the TAD extension and ask that you give them your consideration. I believe that under no circumstances should the, should the TADS receive a blanket 25-year extension. Such an extension would do a disservice to Steve Atlanta and break the city's promise to return the TADS increments to Atlanta schools and the county and city operations after 25 years. A stated aim of the mayor's proposed TAD extension is to reduce racial and economic inequality of a very good intention. But TADS have had the last 20 to 30 years to help reduce inequality. And today, the city of Atlanta is still often cited as one of the most economically unequal cities in the United States of America. TADS have clearly not been able to answer the need to reduce economic inequality. And I do not think any extension of the TADS would help with that problem. And that's because the money received by the TADS can only be spent on real estate projects, keeping essential money from services that actually help reduce inequality and poverty, like social services, public schools, and job training. Instead of seeing that money be used to make our communities more affordable, the money is spent on failed TAD projects, overspending on land, exorbitant construction costs, and promised but undelivered affordable housing units. If the TADS are extended, it should not be a blanket extension. Each individual district needs to be reviewed on its merits. And any TAD extension should be constrained narrowly. With the city council ideally returning, retaining the ability to... With the city council ideally returning, retaining the ability to approve each individual TAD project, adding a layer of accountability. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next up will be Stephen Imlay. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Imel. I am a District Two resident. And I know the TADS are not up for a vote today, but I am here to keep y'all on notice that we are paying attention. I'm speaking today to oppose the blanket extension of the TADS. And I also ask that all the council members that remain this coming term also do so. The TADS are an extraction of our tax dollars from public schools and our city services into unaccountable slush fund for private development. They leave already underfunded parts of the city hurting for funds and projects. The projects they fund have displaced the very people whose tax dollars they used to build them. The city recently started posting propaganda for the TAD extension. And it's clear to me that from the first project they could find worth posting about, which was a single food bank contribution of $250,000, that they are running short on things that the community would believe actually is a positive benefit to them. Considering that hundreds of millions of dollars have been diverted from our schools and our public services for private business interests. The city does not need to divert funds from our public schools to make food banks. We can fund our schools and feed Atlanta's. It doesn't have to be one or the other. If the city is in need of $250,000 to help people in need, I would ask that they consider diverting some of the money that we spend trying to please them instead. As a final note, on the agenda today, there's a resolution which was previously tabled, which would, I believe, do more than any TAD good to make our communities more affordable, walkable, and vibrant. And that is 25R 4136, which removes parking minimums across the entire city. And we would transform the city we all love into one that does not require every resident to own a car. I ask that you take that today and pass that if you really want to build in Atlanta that works for the working class. I also look forward to celebrating Charles Howard Shook Day with you all next year.
Thank you. Next will be Margie MacLeod. Due to the time, you'll have up to four minutes today.
Good afternoon. I'm just, you know, it's heartbreaking that we come down here. How many times the police shoot seventeen times in the back? And if that happened to even the military, you cannot shoot nobody seventeen times. We need policy. And I hope y'all be able to change them. I didn't come down there for this, but I came down, miscommunication. That's what's happened. Y'all say Two Piece Street? It don't work. It's out of order. Because one-stop shop, I need to talk to Dozer. Y'all need an update. I was there Friday. No one there. Security guard would go tell people where to go. When you say one-stop, it's not working. Please, get up out of your chairs and go to Two Piece Street. No one's there. No one's there. So, the security guard is telling the people where to go. So, y'all, you send the people there. We had one lady Friday, I was down here. She have cancer. She getting chemo. Maybe Dozer don't know this. He sent her to Two Piece Street. One-stop shop. It's out of order. No one's there. They're not helping. I went there myself. And then you want to know why the homeless get so upset? Because y'all tell them about the agency, they're not picking up their phone? You don't know how it feel to be homeless. Maybe one day, you never know. One paycheck to another. People is tired. And I'm tired coming down here because they called me. And also, Greenbrier, Council, Overstreet, you need to go there. Because the seniors is complaining. And they're calling me. Because guess what? You fooled them. Not you. Y'all have them come down here, the houses, the news apartments, they tearing down. The water don't work. The fire department can't get in. You heard, I ain't got to go through all that, but you heard about it. Please go see them. Even you got in, but please go see them and talk to them. Communication mean a lot. The homeless, they need the right details. If you're gonna send them, nobody's picking up the phone. They called the agency, no one's picking up the phone. The phone just rang, rang, rang. And they need help. I know we got them out. They under them from under the bridges. But how long? Eventually, they getting evicted now. And then we're gonna have more problems. Because the World Cup coming, we making sure our streets is, everything's shiny. But rent control. We've got to put a cap on this rent. I know y'all would say we gotta have, go to the state. You have to. Go into the House Representative, go to the Senate. The only solution, we have to put a cap on the rent. That's the only thing that we're gonna do. Because you don't have enough low-income housing. We don't have it. So, let's be truthful for it. Because homeless gonna be, people losing their jobs. So, guess what's gonna happen? They losing jobs. So, what I'm saying to you, and the mayor, you hear me. You say you okay with the mayor, with the governor. You say you don't like the slash, you put circle. Please go to the governor and tell him that we need rent control. Will you please pass this out for me? And I know this next year, I've been talking about for two years, put a cap on the rent. History repeat itself. History is repeating itself. We got to have rent control. We got to have a cap on this rent.
Thank you.
You can talk to me, Dozer, I'm gonna let you know. You talk.
Counselor Dozer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. MacLeod, I was listening to you in the back, so I appreciate you coming down here. I spoke with Ms. McNeil, obviously, and told her, yes, I did tell her go to Two Piece Street, but that wasn't the only thing I told her, just so you know. I let her know, similar what you shared, that in the conversations I've had with folks that have tried to navigate the office there, sometimes it can take time, sometimes, it's very bureaucratic. I also asked her to share some additional information with me so I can work directly with Partners for Home, In Town, some of our other partners, to try to see what sort of assistance we can provide more immediately. I have not received that yet. So, please relay it to Ms. McNeil to share that with me so we can try to work that. But the Two Piece Street piece, the Housing Help Center piece, yes, is bureaucratic, but it's also part of the system that we put in place to help people in a consistent way. And I recognize that it takes time, but just know that wasn't the only thing I shared with her. And I want her to be sure that she has that information with her so I can get her the help that she needs.
Can I respond back? She have, she have a list. And that list, she called every agency, what you talking about? I'm just letting you know. No one was there Friday. Guess imagine, people come there, they don't have cars, they don't have transportation, they sick. But why Two Piece Street was not open? The security guards was there.
Thank you.
And then miscommunication, it's not open. It's closed. What you say, it's out of order.
Mr. President, if I could just add one more. And I don't want to litigate, you know, in this way, but I did share with her because of the Thanksgiving holiday that she needed to get over there Wednesday, recognizing that that could potentially be a challenge. I still want to make sure she gets the assistance that she needs, and I'm not stepping away or stepping back from this work. But just know that, I'm sorry that she had to deal with that last week, but her challenges aren't final in terms of her being able to get the help that she needs. So, just know that I'm not...
Okay, I'll send her back down here, because she need help.
Or have her call me or text me. I'm still waiting for the information that I requested, so...
Okay, take care.
Thank you. Next will be Nate Knoff. You have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Nate Knoff. And last week, you were asked to sign off on tax allocation districts to defund Atlanta Public Schools and hand a $5 billion blank check to for-profit developers with a pinky promise that in 30 years, the profits will trickle down. We've had enough of trickle-down economics. This TAD extension has no project lists. There's no guarantee of any return on investment. And even though you're investing billions of dollars, this council won't get a seat at the table for any formal decision-making, and you don't get a vote. Who takes a deal like that? What kind of investor or businessperson would ever agree to those terms? Nobody. Because it's fundamentally unreasonable. This TAD is being marketed to the public with an expensive PR campaign, like we're finding some new source of revenue. Oh, don't you want all this money for development? But this isn't new money. This is 30 years of general fund money that we would borrow from ourselves and our schools in the future and just signing away. This TAD proposal is not a question of whether the development will happen or not. This is a question of what kind of development happens and who has decision-making power over it. Writing a blank check to the mayor's office and Invest Atlanta means that you all as city council members would lose control over those funds. As council members, you have a responsibility to oversee this spending. If someone wants to build a project in your district, get a proposal in writing. Introduce legislation about it and pass it in a vote. But there is a way this council can raise new tax revenue by making commercial properties pay their fair share in taxes. A Georgia Tech study found the city is missing $300 million in revenue a year. Over the same 30-year period, that's $9 billion. The TAD extension is $5 billion, and none of it is new revenue. Taxing commercial properties is $9 billion, and it's all new revenue. The city should raise that money and use it for democratically-controlled public investment through the Atlanta Urban Development Corporation for deeply affordable social housing.
Thank you. Counselor Bakteri?
I agree with everything that I just want to again state that commercial taxes are dictated by Fulton County. I am with you 1,000%. I will gladly call out Fulton County on this mic every single chance I get. So, to your point, commercial revenue, need to do it. Also, the TADS are very imperfect and need a lot of work. So, but I just wanted to flag for anyone listening, Fulton County helped me do that when the time comes and holds accountable. Keep holding us accountable as well. But on the commercial piece, the Fulton County Development Authority, as well as the, what is it? The committee called? Thank you. And the Fulton County Board of Assessors need to do their jobs and stop allowing agencies like BlackRock to pay less than $5,000 in property taxes in a single year while they buy up houses and sell it to their own shell companies to raise up property costs for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Leith Abdelhader. You have up to two minutes.
Hello, my name is Leith Abdelhader. I'm a member of the Atlanta Alliance Against Racist Political Oppression. And I'm a resident of District 11. I'm here to demand accountability and transparency for the murder of Linton Blackwell. Linton Blackwell was the father of twins, an artist, a resident of Buckhead, and a beloved community member. On October 11th, he was shot 17 times, as you all have heard many times today, in the back by an off-duty cop, Gerald Walker. The family is still demanding answers and transparency from the department. Gerald Walker was off-duty when he murdered Linton Blackwell. And not only that, he also had many conduct issues and violations on the job, including many violations that had to do with his body cam. Gerald Walker should be in prison for this cold-blooded murder. I ask city council to do everything in their power to make sure Linton Blackwell's family gets the answers and justice that they deserve. We demand transparency and accountability for the murder of Linton Blackwell. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Minister Brelof. Due to the time, you have up to four minutes today.
Praise God. Greetings to you all this afternoon. I'm just so disturbed and hurt. And I want to congratulate you, Councilman Shook. Long time. You really is ambassador to this city, or was. And always will be. Because you had touched a lot of people's hearts. As the cries went out today, it touched my heart even deeper that all us up here and out here have experienced today that we must have the love of God in us and for people. When you care about people in your community, it should make you feel special. I feel special, even being arrested years ago. Eighty percent taking care of community English Avenue. Support some of the council members there here and late council members with my money. And as the great-grandmother, I feel very special. And I just want to read you all this scripture because my heart is overload right now. Because God said, "If my people, who is called by my name, humble themselves in prayer and seek my faith and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven." And the Lord said, "He will forgive us of our sins, and he will heal our land." To you, mayor, this is for you and all of us. The Lord said, "We all must repent." And coming here this afternoon and hearing about this young man being shot 17 times in the back. Now, I am a mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, and many of you all here today. We must have the feeling, the feeling of what happened to this young man. He should be arrested. You all know this. You all know this. You all have the power in your hands to God. And stop being so compulsive and don't see to eye what is going on in this city. We are taxpayers. I'm a long-time taxpayer. Councilman Norwood, you know. Boom, you know. Overstreet, you know. Michael, you surely know. You all old-time, and as Councilman Shook, you have walked these grounds, you have walked these streets. You know what's going on. You all got to make this right. You can't go back home and sit and lay on your pillows and think this is gonna be okay. Because didn't you hear the people, the family? They are hurt. This could be a war in this city because what happened to that young man. You got to make this right on everything you do. Now, I didn't want to come here today, and I got a phone call. And I said, "Well, you know what? Yes, Councilman Shook, I respect him, and I'm going." But it was more than that. It's for us to reason and look at the real detail what's going on in crisis in this city. And you hear how Buckhead has been restored. The city of Atlanta could be restored in a beautiful way. You all can be a role model for other cities. Wake up, people. You young people who has the power in your hand, now President Overstreet. You got a lot to do, baby. You got to pray more, get with many other prayer warriors, Michael Barnes, all of you all. You have within the power of your hand to do it. God bless you all. I love you, and happy holidays to you.
Next will be Charles Shatton. You have up to two minutes.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Charles Shatton. I am here today, standing with the family of Linton Blackwell to demand justice and accountability for his tragic death. On October 11th, Linton was shot 17 times by off-duty Atlanta Police Officer Gerald Walker outside the Five Paces Inn Bar in Buckhead. An independent autopsy confirmed many of those shots were to his back. Let that sink in. Seventeen shots, many in the back. As this council probably knows, a witness and the autopsy evidence raises critical questions. Primarily, if an individual is shot in the back, are they an immediate threat to the officer's life? We believe that the officer pursued and gunned down Linton Blackwell in an action that needs to be fully investigated, not excused. Linton was a devoted father to his twin daughters, an entrepreneur, and a respected member of the community. He deserved to make it home that night. The community deserves answers, transparency, and accountability. We know that Officer Walker has a history of prior disciplinary violations within the department. This pattern of conduct cannot be ignored any longer. We demand the following actions from City of Atlanta and the District Attorney's Office. A full, transparent investigation into the actions of Gerald Walker. The release of all relevant footage, including the body camera and surveillance video to the public and the family immediately. A commitment from the Fulton County District Attorney's Office to present this case to a grand jury and pursue appropriate charges if the investigation warrants it. We are watching, and we will not rest until justice is served for Linton Blackwell. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Matthew Sampson. You have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Matthew Sampson.
My name is Matthew Sampson. I'm a resident of District 2, Old Fourth Ward. First, I wanted to give my condolences to the family of Linton Blackwell. I believe we must get justice for him and certainly charge Gerald Walker for his murder. Now, I'm here to speak on the tax allocation district extension plans that are in the works. I'm aware that that vote is being pushed to next year. But I'd like to ask those of you that'll be here for the vote in January to vote no on them in their current state. As we all know, the goal of a TAD is to spur development in underdeveloped, undervalued areas, but most of the TADs are no longer undervalued today. It is a fact that extending the TADs will harm our city schools and local services by depriving them of the revenue they should be getting when those TADs set to expire in 2030, not to mention an inevitable increase in taxes needed to offset the revenue loss of TADs that would be shouldered by the homeowners and renters, probably already struggling with the rising cost of living in Atlanta. It's worth noting that the actual effectiveness of TADs to spur on development is also highly questionable, as research has shown that they do not actually cause new development and really just redirect the new tax revenue, once again serving our schools and local services with that money. Now, there are some things, you know, I'd like to not just complain and present some solutions here, that would make me be willing to accept, you know, continued use of TADs in Atlanta, which are, for starters, to definitely let the TAD set to expire in 2030 do so, so our schools and services can get the funding they deserve. Along with that, have a serious postmortem of the existing TADs with an analysis of how they failed to improve equity, and let that inform the design of new tax allocation districts. In addition, increase community participation and have a more clear and transparent list of specific projects and proposals to pull in City Council Committee approval on TAD-funded projects. And, all right, lastly, I'd like to voice my support for the resolution to remove all off-street parking minimum requirements citywide. As said in the resolution, it's excellent for our city and something we must do as we're building more housing, you know, trying to improve walkability and even reduce traffic. Thank you for your time. And then lastly, I wanted to shout out Carden, my council member.
Thank you.
I think you've been doing really great.
Thank you. Next is Demetrius Brewer. Do you yield the time? You have up to four minutes.
Good morning, the board, afternoon, board of commissioners. I'm back today to show facts, that you have some that's on housing, long-term houses, and still are left out here on MLK, and Shirley Clark Franklin. Shouldn't be like that. And you have other facts that you got some that wasn't even on the list that jumped in on before these peoples right here. I witnessed it with my own eyes. I stand out as street groomer security. That's what I do out there. I do God willing, other areas. So we all should be serving the same God and be all on one page. It shouldn't be folks just jumping up in front of folks because they know peoples that over certain programs and lie to be overlooked, like my brother Brian, like my brother Eric, like my sister. I heard a lot today, so my brain like just powered up right now, so I really don't know what to say right now. I just asked everybody to get on one accord. I'm gonna give one of these minutes to a side for little homies that we lost over here on Simpson like the day before yesterday. Little kid, 17 years old, got shot in the back also. So there's a lot going on, man. And I just ask that the peoples that I come before could see the things that I see too. I only got two eyes. Y'all got a bunch of cameras around. Y'all gotta start seeing what's really real. There's a lot of folk that angry with y'all, but they ain't really angry with y'all. They just angry on the lack of what supposed to be done, and it ain't being done. Got to tighten up, man. If I did 30 years in prison and worked in 19 different counties in the state of Georgia and came home and still this focus, I know where y'all can get right, man. I look up to y'all, man. Don't look down on nobody. God didn't look down on me during my 30. He really didn't. I'm here, man. I'm here. Y'all need my help? I'm here. But it's time to get, it's just time to get it right, man. Time to get these folks out of these streets for real. Quit sending these folks over here in starvation armies and shelters. For one day, that ain't gonna last, and these folks right back out here. And then y'all send the police and stuff out here, you know, like Sergeant Ames, them just come out here with a tactic. They scary some of these peoples. They gonna make them reply stupid, and then they go in handcuffs, and these folks ain't even doing nothing wrong, but just trying to get off the streets. I have my brother Brian, he want to speak. So I'm gonna step off the mic, man. But, board of commissioners, if y'all respect anything else, respect God's word, man. It can clean out the Bible, man, you know? Respect those. Treat yourself as you would treat your neighbor, that's it.
Thank you. Sorry, we've been through this. You can't yield time unless it's on the list.
No, no, he got his own time.
Sorry?
Sorry, I'm sorry, President.
Oh, we've got, no, we've got one in between. I'm sorry. We've got, we've got a couple in between.
Okay.
Sorry, you're on the list. We've got a couple in between. Sorry. Kat Leatherwood, you have up to two minutes.
My name is Kat Leatherwood, and I'm a resident of East Atlanta. I came today because I wanted to speak against the proposed TAD extensions. I know it's not up for a vote, but I'm here anyway. And I actually was very pleased to see Councilmember Dozier's parking ordinance change. Huge fan. I hear a lot about the desire from City Hall to turn Atlanta into a world-class city. The reason I chose this city to call home was because of the city already contains the most important ingredient, and that's world-class people. And what I would love to see is their growth and their desires prioritized over corporations and developers from out of state. I think it's wise to allow the TADs to sunset at their intended time and to allow that tax money to flow back into the hands of elected officials instead of the Invest Atlanta Board, who I didn't vote for. As the number of citizens in Atlanta expands, we need to make sure that we're using our tax dollars to expand services and not buy decrepit buildings to rot. I want more public schools instead of that money sitting in developer pockets. As we grow and develop more housing for people to live, we need to cut the parking requirements. With citizens voting for More Marta in 2016 and electing a pro-beltline rail candidate this year with an overwhelming percentage, it's time to start expanding public transit aggressively, more buses, and getting started on beltline rail. I applaud Councilmember Dozier to making a bold move in pushing Atlanta towards the future with housing and transportation for all. On the inaugural Youth Climate Action Day and Howard Shook Day, we should honor their work and their futures in working towards in Atlanta with more housing, more schools, and more transit. And if safety for all is actually a priority, can we institute higher standards for cops? Linton Blackwell's killer walks free, and when this Cop City petition was ignored, it was 116,000 signatures, training was cited as a need for this public safety facility. Where's that training at? Like, what's the point of honoring these children if you can't be guaranteed that they won't be gunned down 17 times in the back by APD? It feels false, and it feels fake. So, yeah, protect the city, not the corporations. They're what makes this city special.
Thank you. Next will be Matthew Nursey. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you, Council. I originally came here to tell the, remind the City Council and the mayor that the public is still watching the TAD vote very closely. But, you know, every time I come here, I hear a whole lot of other things that get my mind going. The Housing Help Center was mentioned. Maybe the Housing Help Center would function a little better if it was actually funded. We send people to the Housing Help Center all the time, and it's, it's, yeah, bureaucracy is the nice way to put it. You know, it's, it's sending people somewhere for nothing to happen, essentially. And what we originally wanted was an Office of the Tenant Advocate, and that's what we thought we were going to get when the mayor got elected, but, you know, that's not what we ended up with. We ended up with the Housing Help Center, so here I am again advocating for an Office of the Tenant Advocate. And, you know, my condolences to the Blackwell family. It's incredible, like, we spend a third of our budget on policing. And again, the Housing Help Center, perfect example of something we could be funding with that. It's in the charter, I guess, that we have to spend at least 10% on policing, but a third of our budget is crazy. So, you know, to the new incoming council, the new term, we need to focus more on things that keep people actually safe, and that is an affordable place to live. People, you know, can't be living in precarity, paycheck to paycheck, without a place to live. That's what keeps people safe. Yeah, and so the board, the committee that, the Oversight Commission for the TADs is just a who's who of, you know, corporations like the Arthur Blank Foundation and Invest Atlanta. These are not the people that we voted in to get these things done. And I will say, the TADs, it was mentioned that the TADs came around during Maynard Jackson, that the fad of TADs coincided with the absolute destruction of all public housing in Atlanta.
Time is expired.
The, the private development has gotten us into this mess. It is time for public development to lift us out. No more private development.
Time is expired. Thank you. Finally, today will be Brian Green.
How y'all doing today? My name's Brian, and I'm homeless on the streets of Atlanta, and I just wanted to come and talk today about the street groomers and who they are and what they do. They've been really helping me out, although, you know, they don't have the means to provide me shelter. I understand that, but they've been helping me with food and clothing, and they've been coming down and pushing me in my wheelchair, taking me to these, you know, events that I have with Social Security and things. And I'd just like to say that, you know, these guys, the street groomers, you know, they come out to the, to the streets, and they help the people who really do need the help. So if you've got a solution to a problem, I think that it would be the street groomers because they do so much for me. So if you want to, you know, you want an agency or someone who is meeting the needs of the homeless people in Atlanta, you need to talk to Demetrius with street groomers because they really do help out. And I tell you what, I'm so thankful. I have no way of taking care of myself or even making my situation any better, other than taking the help that the street groomers have been offering. They come out, and they take time, and they, they're wonderful people, but they need a little help. They don't have the means to help everybody. So I would just like to ask that y'all look into them and maybe have a fund for them so that they could continue to do what they do and help people like me, homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who came today to speak to the council. We will now move to the report of the Journal. Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, and members of council. I, Corinne Lindo, municipal clerk of the City of Atlanta, do hereby certify that the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, November 17, 2025, are true and correct.
If there are no additions or edits to the Journal, I would entertain a motion to adopt. Moved by Councilmember Juan, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. In discussion of the motion to adopt the agenda, we do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the Journal.
12 yeas, 0 nays.
12 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to adopt the Journal carries. Next, we'll move to Communications. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, if I may take, we may have an amendment to one of the items, so if I may take items number 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 as a block?
Without objection, please proceed.
Item number 1, it's 25C 0130. This is a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Courtney English to serve as a member of the Neighborhood Reinvestment Initiative Commission. Item number 3 is 25C 0132. This is a communication from Marvin Nesbit Jr., accepting service on behalf of Focus Community Strategies to serve as a member of the Neighborhood Reinvestment Initiative Commission. Item number 4 is 25C 0133. This is a communication from John Amon, accepting service on behalf of the West Side Future to serve as a member of the Neighborhood Reinvestment Initiative Commission. Item number 5 is 25C 0134. This is a communication from Michelle Matthews, accepting service on behalf of Purpose Built Communities to serve as a member of the Neighborhood Reinvestment Initiative Commission. Item number 6 is 25C 0135. This is a communication from Daniel Choi Jr., accepting service on behalf of the Arthur M. Blank Foundation to serve as a member of the Neighborhood Reinvestment Initiative Commission. Item number 7 is 25C 0136. This is a communication from Municipal Clerk Corinne Lindo, advising that various boards, authorities, commissions, et cetera, bases have sunset pursuant to Section 3-401 of the City Charter. Item number 8 is 25C 0137. This is a communication from Municipal Clerk Corinne Lindo, submitting a report of administrative corrections made to previously adopted legislation between the regular council meeting dates of November 17, 2025, and December 1, 2025, to the Atlanta City Council. In accordance with Section 2-275 of the Atlanta Code of Ordinances, those include 25R 4011, 250 1488, and 25R 4077. All those items, staff recommendation to accept and file.
I would entertain a motion to accept and file these seven items. Moved by Councilmember Juan. Is there a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilmember Norwood. Any discussion on the motion to accept and file these seven items? We do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to accept and file these seven items carries. Councilmember Juan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next communication coming before us appoints Adam Parker to the Neighborhood Reinvestment Commission from the Invest Atlanta TAD Committee. 25R 4088, which we adopted on November 17, lists the Chair of CDHS and the four remaining members of the TAD Committee. And so I'd like to make a motion to amend this communication to add the names of Dana Barrett, Ken Zef, and Eunice Glover, in addition to Adam Parker.
There's a motion to amend per Counselor Westmoreland's suggestion. Is there a second to his amendment?
No.
Seconded by Counselor Norwood. Any discussion on his motion to amend? Counselor Juan.
Is that even necessary? I thought the legislation just essentially enumerated each one of the members, and so it's, there wasn't even an appointment necessary. So to me, if we just filed this, those automatically all go on to the commission. I will let the clerk elaborate, but in our conversation, she indicated that an acceptance file would be needed for all the names. Okay, I'm not gonna, let's not belabor this.
Yeah, Councilmember, you need a specific member to be identified, right? Because if, just similar to the committee appointment, the chair, we still have to update it each time there's a chair's name. So here, we need the name of who the appointees are. They have to take an oath of service, so if they leave and then, it still says that whoever is on that part of that TAD, you know, will become a member, then whoever the new person is, we will have that name. And so it's just, they have to be sworn in individually, per the code.
Counselor Collins.
Now, that answered my question, just so for clarity, Matt, the Invest Atlanta TAD Committee are all those individuals that was just rolled to serve on the NIR Commission?
As they are members of the Invest Atlanta TAD Committee for 2026.
Got it. Yep, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend? Here we move to vote. We do this via unanimous consent, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to amend.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to amend carries. Do you want to read the communication now before we accept and file it?
Yes, this is 25C 0131. This is a communication from Adam Parker and the other names, accepting service on behalf of the Invest Atlanta TAD Committee to serve as members of the Neighborhood Reinvestment Initiative Commission.
And the staff recommendation is?
To accept and file.
So I would entertain a motion to accept and file this item as amended. Sorry, who made the? Moved by Counselor Rahila, seconded by Collins. Is there any discussion on the motion to accept and file this item as amended? Counselor Juan. Oh. We do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection? The motion to accept and file is amended. Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. The motion to accept and file is amended carries. Any other communications? No.
Captain, please. Captain, please, Soler.
Thank you. There's no veto legislation for consideration. There is one piece of unfinished business, 25R 4136. This was held in the breasts of council at the last full meeting. It had come forward with a recommendation, so it returns to us now in this meeting as a motion to adopt. Now we'll open up for conversation. Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to thank colleagues who outspoken over the last two, three, four weeks about this particular paper. I came into this legislation wanting to make sure that Atlanta remains competitive with its peer cities that have taken similar steps to ensure that they could produce affordable housing, that they can ensure that housing was connected to transportation, that they can ensure that, from an economic development standpoint, business owners stood a fighting chance. The data that informs this push to remove parking minimum citywide highlights that it costs roughly $50,000 to build a parking space in a structured parking lot. Those costs get passed on to renters, to consumers, to the tune of about $500 a month, depending on the location of the parking structure and other fees and additional costs that get added on. However, I recognize that there continues to be some concern about the timing of the legislation. We are at the end of our term. It's the last meeting of the term, and I know, though, as a body, we've been talking about this for the last month. I recognize that members of our community have wanted to engage in this conversation in a much more robust and intentional way, and I want to make sure that we provide that opportunity. I also recognize, too, that the legislation that, this legislation is attempting to encourage to incorporate this sort of policy idea will be before this body in the next term, with the new council that will be sworn in in January, and want to make sure that we have as much synergy as possible with such a far-reaching proposal that we have in place here. I will reiterate, you know, this is a non-binding resolution that we can have these, continue to have these conversations outside of the scope of this particular forum. But in this non-binding resolution, I do want to, regardless of what happens with this particular paper, I want to make sure that we continue to talk about how important it is we consider the relationship between parking and the cost of living here in the City of Atlanta. One thing I also have considered is that many of our peer cities have already taken this step. Birmingham, Austin, Denver, Minneapolis, San Diego did this, and they saw a five times increase in affordable housing production. And so there is a significant link between the regulatory burden that we place on development and our ability to achieve our policy goals, whether they're affordable housing, whether it's protecting trees and making sure developers have a more stronger and consistent control over the sites that they're trying to build. And so I want to make sure we continue to have this conversation, but I recognize that the timing has left some of my colleagues with a bit of concern. And so while I recognize that the legislation came out of zoning committee favorably, several of the public comments that we heard today were favorable of making, taking this step, I want to give us a little bit more time to marinate, to digest, to discuss, to debate. And with that, I recognize the motions to approve, but I will make a substitute motion to refer back to zoning committee. I recognize this is the last meeting of the year, and we will have to reintroduce this legislation in January to reconsider it. But I think that is the most appropriate action considering where we are today with this legislation. So I'll make that a substitute motion, knowing that with the end of term, we won't have a chance to take it back up, but I want that to be the motion.
Second.
There's a motion to refer 25R 4136 by Councilmember Dozier, seconded by Councilmember Hillis. Just for clarity, I'm going to go ahead and just read the caption quickly so that we have that for the record. 25R 4136, a resolution by Councilmembers Dozier, Westmoreland, Wykoff, Winston, and Bakhtiari, requesting the Department of City plan to remove parking minimum requirement citywide as part of the zoning 2.0 rewrite, re-recognizing the success of previous reforms and the opportunity to transform Zalanda's built environment and for other purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer this item.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Collins.
Councilmember Collins is, hi. Councilmember Collins is aye.
Councilmember Bond. Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to refer carries. Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, thank you for considering the substitute motion. I look forward to having a continued conversation with you all over the next month, and I look forward to reintroducing a version of legislation that accommodates some of the concerns, but also highlights, better highlights some of the opportunities for our city as we look to make our city a city of the future. So thank you.
Thank you. That is all of our unfinished business. We'll now move to the consent agenda, Section 1. These are items for second reading. They begin on page 5 of the materials. The appropriate motion will be to adopt, which I will entertain in a moment. But first, let me ask, are there any items to be removed? Councilmember Juan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I want to remove on page 17, item 12. It's 25R 4280. This is under the Transportation Committee Resolutions. Again, page 17, item 12, item 25R 4280.
Thank you. Any other items for removal from the consent agenda? Councilmember Lewis. Can you turn your mic on?
Want to pull 250111663. Item number 22, pull it off consent.
It's 25O 1613. Is that correct? Councilmember Lewis.
1663.
1663, thank you. Councilmember Bond.
Like to remove 25O 1654.
25O 1654. Any others? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus the three items. Moved by Councilmember Juan. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Any discussion on the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Section 1, with two items removed? I mean, sorry, three items removed. Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt the consent agenda with items removed.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Councilmember Bond, what is your vote?
Councilmember Bond's an aye.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt the consent agenda, Section 1, with three items removed carries. Councilmember Winston.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to send two items post haste. That is 25-O 1673, which is on page 13, item number 31, and then 25-O 1674, which is on page 14, item number 32.
There's a motion by Councilmember Winston to send 25-O 1673 and 1674 to the mayor's office post haste. Before I get a second, are there any other items to be moved post haste? Is there a second? Councilmember Winston's motion. Seconded by Councilmember Juan. Any discussion on the motion to move these two items post haste? Hearing none, we do this via unanimous consent. Any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to move these two items post haste.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to move these two items post haste carries. Next, we will move to the report of standing committees. Today, we will begin with Transportation Committee Chairman Amos.
Mr. President, start with the resolution in which we actually have a substitute for. It's 25-R-4282, item number one, page 29. Make a motion to bring forth the substitute.
You actually do me a favor and motion to adopt first and then report the substitute because it came out of committee without a recommendation. So let's put it on the floor first.
Okay. So a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt 25R 4282 by Councilmember Amos, seconded by Councilmember Juan. Move to discussion. Councilmember Amos.
Right. Now, motion, this paper actually changes the caption. Bring, going to require bring forth substitute message, changes the caption, add a recommended language by the law department to clarify the intent of the legislation and adds the Ipro report.
There's a count, there's a motion by Councilmember Amos to bring forth the substitute. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Juan. Any discussion on the motion to bring forth the substitute on 25R 4282? We can do this via unanimous consent as far as bringing forth substitute, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to bring forth the substitute.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. Motion to bring forth substitute carries. We now have substituted. Let's read the new caption.
25-R-4282, a resolution by Transportation Committee as substitute by the Atlanta City Council, authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute cooperative agreement listed for winter operations and maintenance services at Harpsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Sure and Industries Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Aviation pursuant to Session 2-1602 ETS EQ of the City Code of Ordinance of the Atlanta, City of Atlanta, Georgia, utilizing Sourcewell Contract Airport Runway Materials listed Sure Win Industries for the term of 18 months and the amount not to exceed $10 million. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account number listed herein and for other purposes. Motion to approve the substitute.
There's a motion by Councilmember Amos, seconded by Councilmember Juan, to adopt 25R 4282 as substituted. Any discussion on the motion to adopt this item as substituted? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. One moment.
Councilmember Bond, how would you like to vote? Yeah, I think there's something wrong with the system. Councilmember Bond's an aye.
We need everyone to re-vote again, Mr. President.
Vote reopened.
Will everyone please vote?
Councilmember Bond's an aye.
The vote's closed. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt the substitute carries.
Thanks, sir. Next item is the one that was pulled off Consent Agenda 25-R-4280. To my understanding, there needs to be a change to the caption and to the final where's, final be, final be resolved clause. So I make a motion to amend.
There's a motion to amend 25R 4280. Because it came off of consent, it's already, a motion to adopt's already here. So a motion to amend by Councilmember Amos, seconded by Councilmember Norwood. Any discussion on the motion to amend this item? Hearing, we can do this via unanimous consent. Any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to amend.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to amend carries.
Thank you. The item is 25-R-4280. A resolution by Transportation Committee as amended by Atlanta City Council, authorizing the mayor or his designate to exercise the final renewal option for contract listing intersection improvements project on Moores Mill Road at two locations with BRTU Construction Incorporated on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for a term of one year effective March 22, 2026, through March 21, 2027, with no additional funding required and for other purposes. Motion to adopt as amended.
There's a motion to adopt 25R 4280 as amended by Councilmember Amos. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Juan. Any discussion on the motion to adopt as amended this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt as amended.
The vote is open. The vote's closed. Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt is amended carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next up will be Finance Exec, Chair Shook.
All right, thank you. First up is 25O 1591. It's a third read final adoption. This comes forward favorable on substitute as amended. There was one abstention. This is an ordinance by Westmoreland, Winston, Juan, Dozier, Hillis, and Bakhtiari as substituted by CDHS, substituted and amended by the Finance Executive Committee to amend the Charter of the City where listed by amending the code sections as stated to more explicitly define the purpose of and uses for the Dedicated Affordable Housing Fund to provide for certain reporting requirements related thereto and for other purposes. Motion to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt coming out of committee 25O 1591. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Yes, thank you. Obviously, I am in favor of the work that has been done on this. I will say that I am frustrated because the ask and one of the things that we were doing was to ensure that the Housing Trust Fund went to set dollars, but it is hard to talk about capping how much is being used for employment when we still do not know what the employment numbers are. So it has been asked repeatedly. I'm asking again. How many people are in the, in this office? How many people are doing the work? We know that there were 40 people that were not going to be included in this office anymore. So that also leads to questions of how many folks aren't, were there to begin with? How much is being spent on them? And I, and this is all information in public record. If that could please be given it to us again, because although I am going to motion to approve, and this needs to be adopted today, I will say that if that information is not received after many years of asking, I will be bringing this up again next year because we need to know so that we're ensuring that our dollars are going where they need to. Yes, staff is needed to ensure that we execute these daughters, these daughters, these dollars well and responsibly. But again, we cannot make those decisions responsibly if we do not have the information. And I've heard repeatedly, we can get you that data. We can get you that information. I have still yet to receive it. So I'm asking once again into the mic. Can council please receive how many employees there are? What they are doing, what their line item budget is? Having a better understanding of how this office works and how the dollars are being allocated with our housing office. That is my ask again, and, but I will go ahead and motion to approve this today. It's already done, so never mind. Then I will be voting in favor. So thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open.
here to enter into a cost agreement for rent production services with Live Nation Entertainment for the twenty-five twenty-six Peach Drop Festival for the benefit of the public in Atlanta in an amount not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars, authorizing that all Peach Drop contracted work should be charged to and paid from the council's suburain to authorize the CFO to execute any insurance agreements which may be necessary for the city sponsorship of the Peach Drop Festival and for other purposes, the motion is to file.
Motion coming out of committee to file twenty-five O sixteen sixty-seven, doesn't need a second. Any discussion on the motion to file this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to file carries.
All right, thank you. This is an ordinance by Shook as substituted by the Atlanta City Council, authorizing transfer fund from various council district carryforward accounts for the twenty-two to twenty-five quadrennial term and for other purposes, motions to approve on substitute.
There's a motion to adopt as substituted twenty-five O sixteen eleven by Councilor Shook. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Overstreet. Any discussion on the motion to adopt as substituted? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt as substituted this item.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt as substituted carries.
Thank you. Twenty-five O sixteen sixty-seven, ordinance by Ms. Overstreet and Ms. Collins waiving the competitive source selection requirements contained in the sections of the code listed here to enter into a cost agreement for rent production services with Live Nation Entertainment for the twenty-five twenty-six Peach Drop Festival for the benefit of the public in Atlanta in an amount not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars, authorizing that all Peach Drop contracted work should be charged to and paid from the council's suburain to authorize the CFO to execute any insurance agreements which may be necessary for the city sponsorship of the Peach Drop Festival and for other purposes, the motion is to file.
Motion coming out of committee to file twenty-five O sixteen sixty-seven, doesn't need a second. Any discussion on the motion to file this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to file carries.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bond pulled twenty-five O sixteen fifty-four from the FEC Consent Agenda. I know he wants us to consider a substitute. I'll make that motion.
There's a motion to substitute twenty-five O sixteen fifty-four by Councilor Shook, seconded by Councilor Juan. Is there any discussion on the motion to bring forth the substitute? We do this via unanimous consent, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on the unanimous consent on the motion to bring forth the substitute.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to bring forth substitute carries.
This is an ordinance by Mr. Bond, substituted by the Atlanta City Council, authorizing a donation in the total amount not to exceed one thousand dollars from the Post One at Large Carry Forward Account to both the Southern Christian Leadership Conference slash Women's Organizational Movement for Equality Now, Inc., and Georgia Stand Up to support the commemoration, the anniversary of Rosa Parks Arrest pursuant to the section of the city charter cited here and for other purposes. This clarifies that it's a thousand dollars to each of two entities, and the original was slightly muddier, so I'll move approval on substitute.
There's a motion by Councilor Shook, seconded by Councilor Bakhtiari, to adopt substitute twenty-five O sixteen fifty-four. Any discussion on the motion to adopt substitute this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt substitute.
The vote is open.
Fifteen yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt substitute carries.
That is all.
Thank you. Next up will be the zoning committee, Chair Westmoreland.
We have three ordinances for second read. Without objection, we can take them as a block as the recommendation is to file.
Go ahead.
Twenty-five O thirteen sixty-one, U twenty-five eighteen, thirty-four eighty-five, Empire Boulevard Southwest, especially for a park for a truck terminal. Twenty-five O fifteen twenty-two, U twenty-five twenty-seven, eight thirty-three Humphrey Street Southwest was especially for a rehabilitation center. And twenty-five O sixteen oh-one, U twenty-five twenty-nine, is eight fifty, Orwood Avenue Southeast. This is a special use for a daycare center. The recommendation coming out of committee is to file.
There's a motion coming out of committee, doesn't need a second to file these three items. Is there any discussion on the motion to file? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file these three items.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
Councilor Boone, I know you're waiting. Aye. Councilor Boone's an aye.
Will everyone please vote? Councilor Boone, what is your vote?
Aye.
The vote is closed, fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays, the motion carries. Councilor Lewis.
And looking at a piece of legislation that was in here about Empire Boulevard, I know that the committee, the community's been against that. MPUZ's been against that full. I know my office did not read that in. And I won't be pulling anything off the, off held, off filed, but I want to make sure I make a statement that the south side of the city is wants to be able to develop as well, and I hope that people are able to stand with us as well. Thank you.
Chair Westmoreland.
That concludes the report of the zoning committee.
Next up will be the Committee on Counsel, Chair Collins.
Thank you, Mr. President. If there are no objections, may we take items one through six as a block?
Please proceed.
Great, thank you. Item one, twenty-five dash C dash zero zero six eight, a communication from Tanya Greer, County Clerk, to the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, submitting the appointment of Mr. Jeffrey Mullavy to serve as a member of the Belt Line Tax Allocation District Advisory Committee, this appointment is for a term of two years. Item number two, twenty-five dash C dash zero one zero five, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Bettina Terry to serve as a member of the Atlanta Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for the City of Atlanta. This appointment is for a term of five years. Item number three, twenty-five dash C dash zero one two zero, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Matthew Cartelich to serve as a member of the Atlanta Urban Design Commission in the Landscape Architect category. This appointment is for a term of three years. Item number four, twenty-five dash C dash zero one zero three, a communication from Council Member Antonio Lewis, District Twelve, appointing Ms. Chrissy Jones to serve as a member of the Anthony Tickman Jones Legacy Commission. Item number five, twenty-five dash C dash zero one two eight, a communication from Council Members Jason H, Jason H. Winston, District One, Carden Wykoff, District Two, Byron Amos, District Three, Jason Dozier, District Four, and Michael Julian Vaughn, Post One at Large, appointing Mr. Darren Givens to serve as a member of the City of Atlanta Americans with Disability Act Advisory Committee. And then our last item, number six, twenty-five dash C dash zero one two nine, a communication from Council President Doug Shipman, appointing Ms. Tamara Jones to serve as a member of the Atlanta Urban Design Commission in the Architect Tool category. This appointment is for a term of three years. These items will come before, come before the body favorable from the Committee on Counsel and from their committees of purview accordingly. The recommendation is to adopt or to approve, sorry.
There's a recommendation coming out of committee to adopt, to approve these six items. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve these six items? We do this via unanimous consent, since your communications, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count, unanimous consent on the motion to approve these six items.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Fifteen yays, zero nays, motion to approve carries.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, motion to approve carries.
Great, thank you. Our ordinances for second reading is not, item number seven, twenty-five dash O dash six one six six four, an ordinance by Councilmember Ishay Collins as substituted by the Committee on Counsel to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, Part Two, which is general ordinances, Chapter Two, which is the administration, Article Three, which is the City Council, Division Two, which are the rules, Section Two dash one three five regarding standing committees to update and clarify the judicial responsibilities and subject matters assigned to each standing committee of the Atlanta City Council and for other purposes. I recommend, this is favorable on substitute and our recommendation is to approve on substitute.
There's a motion, there's a recommendation coming out of committee to approve twenty-five O sixteen sixty-four as substituted, doesn't need a second. Any discussion on the motion to adopt this item as substituted? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt as substituted.
The vote is open.
Thank you.
Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, motion to adopt as substituted carries.
Great. Item number eight, twenty-five dash R dash five two one seven, a resolution on Committee on Counsel, excuse me, a resolution by Committee on Counsel, appointing Mr. Keith A. Lamar to the Ethics Board as the representative of the Gate City Bar Association for a term of three years. Said term to commence upon approval of this resolution and for other purposes, the recommendation is to approve.
There's a recommendation coming out of committee to adopt twenty-five R forty-two seventeen, doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to approve.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, motion to approve carries.
Great. And our last item, number nine, twenty-five dash R dash four-two-eight-five, a resolution by Committee on Counsel to sunset certain boards, authorities, commission, and other groups created by action of the Atlanta City Council because such boards, authority, commissions, and other groups have accomplished the purposes for which they were created, whose authorized term has expired and/or are no longer required and for other purposes, the recommendation is to approve.
There's a recommendation coming out of committee to adopt twenty-five R forty-two eighty-five. It does not need a second. Any discussion on the motion to adopt this item?
Yes. Mr. President, just want to make those aware that these, the two, the two boards or commissions that are being sunsetted was the renaming of, renaming for Shirley Clark Franklin and also, also Michael Langford Parkway.
Great. Any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
One moment. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. President. It concludes our report.
Thank you. Next up today will be Public Safety and Legal Administration, Vice Chair Hillis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did our working committee, so we have no report this week. Under the leadership of the Vice Chair.
Next up, we'll have City Utilities Committee, Chair Lewis.
Please turn to page fifty-five of your full council agenda for the Standing Committee Report on City Utilities for item number one. Item number one, two-five-zero, one-six-six-zero, item one, page fifty-five, forwarded with no recommendation. An ordinance by Councilmember Andrea Boone is amended by the City Utilities Committee waiving Part Two, Code of Ordinances, General Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Ten, Procurement and Real Estate Code, Division Four of the Atlanta City Code, as well as any other conflicting code provisions to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute the Second Amendments to Emergency Procurement Agreements, EPCONDWM two-four-zero-three, one-two-four-zero-two, four-six-A, and EP, and EPCONDWM two-four-zero-three, one-two-four-zero-two, four-six-B, for small meter installation services with Titan Unlimited LLC and KM Davis Contracting Company Incorporated, respectively, on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management to extend the term of each agreement for one year effective January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-six, through January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-seven, to add additional funding in a combined amount not to exceed four million dollars and zero cent. All contracted work will be charged and to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. This item was forwarded with no recommendation. As amended on condition, the condition required DOP to provide the CPO's authorization letter for this emergency procurement and for the justification of the two-year extension. The condition has not been satisfied. The Department of Watershed Management requests to file this paper, so motion is to file.
There's a motion to file by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Juan, twenty-five O sixteen sixty. Is there any discussion on the motion to file this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Councilor Winston's an aye.
Councilor Winston. Winston Collins, her ayes.
The vote is closed, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to file carries.
Thank you. Resolutions, number two, two-five, twenty-five R four-two-seven-zero, item number two, page fifty-five, a resolution by City Utilities authorizing the mayor or his designated need to execute the appropriate documents to accept on behalf of the City of Atlanta an in-kind donation from the Georgia Power Companies Make Ready Program Services to install electric vehicle charging infrastructure at five city facilities valued at the amount of one million five hundred thousand dollars and zero cent and for other purposes, motion to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt coming out of committee, doesn't need a second, twenty-five R forty-two seventy. Any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, motion to adopt carries.
Number three, two-five R four-two-seven-one, item number three, page fifty-five, a resolution by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor or his designated need on behalf of the City of Atlanta to accept an in-kind donation from the Electrification Coalition Foundation Incorporated as part of the Sustainable Cities Fund Implementation Ready Project Grant, six, Level Two, alternating current electrical vehicle charging units valued at thirty thousand dollars and zero cent to be installed at the five city locations to support the city's transportation goals, authorizing the mayor or his designated need or his design, designated need to execute any appropriate agreements to accept the donation and for other purposes, motion to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt coming out of committee, twenty-five R forty-two seventy-one, doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, fourteen yays, zero nays.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items pulled from the Consent Agenda today, two-five-zero, one-six-six-three, item twenty-two, page eleven, an ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis, Andrea L. Boone, Ishay Collins to amend Chapter one-five-four, Article Two, Warden Sewer Billing and Adjustments Procedures of the City of Atlanta's Code of Ordinances so as to add new definitions including department era and one-time use. and one-time usage spike, to expand eligible billing adjustments and credits, to revise the Commissioner's authority related to billing adjustments, to update procedures of the Water and Sewer Appeals Board and for other purposes. This paper was pulled from the consent agenda today because we think we can make it stronger. We truly think we can help the people a little bit more, and so the motion is to file.
Motion to file, 25-01663 by Councilmember Lewis. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Winston. Any discussion on the motion to file this item? Hearing none will move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, 14 yeas, zero nays.
14 yeas, zero nays, motion to file carries.
And, Mr. President, I say I want to thank the Water and Sewer Appeals Board and Councilmember Shook and everybody who works so hard on that legislation, but the goal is to make it a little better for us. Council President, we also have one paper that we need to take in the Committee of a Hold for item number seven, 2501623. Motion to move into Committee of Hold.
There's a motion by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Hillis to move into Committee of the Hold. Is there any discussion? We do this via name's consent. Any objection to the motion moving Committee of the Hold? Madam Clerk, please sound the county name's consent.
14 yeas, zero nays.
14 yeas, zero nays, motion moving Committee of the Hold carries. We're now in Committee of the Hold. Chair Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number five, 2501623, item number seven, page 57. This is an ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend the fiscal year 2026 Water and Wastewater, Water and Wastewater Renewal and Extension Fund, 5052, budget in the amount of $8,200,000 and zero cent to transfer the funds from the Watershed Reserve for appropriations and to add fund to the Whittier Mills sanitary sewer improvement projects and for other purposes. Motion. Second.
So motion by Councilmember Hillis, seconded by Councilmember Lewis to adopt 25-01623. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Councilmember Juan.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the administration as to why this didn't move in committee and it's ready now.
Maybe Finance can answer that question.
I'm sorry? This is, this was in City Utilities, so it'd be Watershed.
Maybe Finance has an answer.
Or Finance can answer. I just. Yeah. I would expect if they want us to move this the last day and we had held it in committee that we'd get an explanation from the administration.
Councilmember Lewis may be able to shed some light. I mean, Councilmember Hillis may be able to shed some light. Councilmember Hillis?
So, not on the committee. I can't speak for why it didn't move at that point, but I know there was some companion legislation that was on the consent agenda that had to catch up, so that's why it was held. But I can't speak for why it didn't move last week. But the companion legislation was on our consent agenda.
Councilmember Juan, can we hold your question for a moment? I'll let Councilmember Shook speak and I'll come back to you. Councilmember Shook.
No, I just did. I was wondering why we're in Committee of the Hold when there's no one here from any of the operating departments.
And I was chair, just didn't get it, Mr. Juan. It wasn't, I'll tell you, as chair, I was there and I think we had a good committee that day. It just, it never came to us.
Mr. Pace, would you like to? Mr. Pace, would you like Mr. Juan to ask a question again? Councilmember Juan.
Thank you. I'm just curious as to, we were, we held this in committee and I'm curious as to the rationale as to why the administration wants to move forward today. Last day of the term. It's kind of a surprise last-minute move. So, just need an explanation before we can proceed.
Operating Officer, Officer of the Mayor, this item was held a couple cycles ago. And as I understand it, the department requested that it move forward at last week's City Utilities meeting, but it remained held. This project, or this paper adds funding to this project to complete the Whittier Mills project in District Nine, which I know Councilmember Hillis is really anticipating completion of this project. And so it was oversight why it was continued to be held at the last City Utilities meeting.
Why?
I'm sorry?
Why? Why didn't someone from?
I'm not sure.
Come up there and explain what you've just said.
Uh, honestly, I am not sure why no one from the department spoke up, but as I understand it, there was a request to move it out of committee last week.
A request from the administration?
The department.
Okay.
Who'd they made the request to?
I believe the request was made to the staff.
I like the legislation. Once again, it was made to the staff. I think that, I appreciate the questions that were asked right now as well. I know that the staff had a lot of things going on at that particular committee meeting.
I do know that the district council members reached out repeatedly to the department about completion of this project. And so, the reason it's being asked today is that another month, well, another six-week delay because it would need to be reintroduced at the beginning of the meeting. So the earliest it could be adopted would be mid-January.
Councilmember Hillis.
Yes, I'll just say again, and I'm not going to cover for whatever non-communication or miscommunication there was from the department and between the council staff, so I won't go there. But just speaking of the project itself, this is a project that I have asked to get off the ground for many years. Myself and Mayor Dickens finally broke ground earlier this year when the department was under the leadership of then Commissioner Al Wiggins. Got off to a good start. Believe the issue with the additional money that is needed, that there was more bedrock that was hit. This is a historic community that's never had actual sewers, their own grapevine sewers from the early 1900s. So the additional money covers getting into that additional bedrock. It covers a stormwater project that was not funded, to my understanding, a small stormwater project, and then also covers resurfacing of all the streets that have been disrupted from the setting of the new sewer line. So, again, won't cover for any myths or non-communication from the department onto the council staff, but we'll just ask for y'all's support because this is a project that this neighborhood's been waiting for, for 20 years to get off the ground. And then it has also been delayed since late the last week in July when the contractor pulled off the project due to the lack of funding. So, I'm thankful to finally see the 8.2 million that will finish the project. And then again, as I said, there was companion legislation that went through the committee last week that this was held to catch up. So, would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none will move to a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, 14 yeas, zero nays.
14 yeas, zero nays, motion to adopt carries.
Mr. President, I now make a motion to exit.
That's, Councilmember Bond, he's making that motion.
Second, I second. Councilmember Bond.
Councilman, Councilman Bond's motion to move out of committee hold. Councilmember Lewis is second. Any discussion on the motion to move out of committee of the hold? We do this via name's consent. Any objection?
14 yeas, zero nays.
14 yeas, zero nays, motion carries. We now stand out of committee hold. We're back into regular session.
Motion to adopt all the actions taken in Committee of Hold and gross.
Motion to adopt all the actions taken by Councilmember Lewis, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Any discussion? We do this via name's consent. Any objection to the motion to approve all the actions taken? Madam Clerk, please sound the name's consent.
14 yeas, zero nays.
14 yeas, zero nays, the motion to adopt en masse carries.
Mr. President, this concludes my last report as the City Utilities Chair to you and Mr. Shook being the Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally today, CDHS Chair Winston.
Thank you, Council President, for one last time. I have one item that was filed unanimously in committee. This is 25-r-4220, a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond authorizing the mayor or his designated need on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute an encroachment agreement with the Georgia Historical Society for the purpose of installing historical marker at Robert W. Woodruff Park located at 91 P Street Street, Atlanta, Georgia 30303, to highlight the history of the Atlanta student movement protests at Richards Department Store and describe the impact of that protest on shaping Georgia's history and for other purposes. I will make a motion to file.
There's a motion to file coming out of committee, 25-r-4220. Doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to file this item? Hearing none will move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, 14 yeas, zero nays.
14 yeas, zero nays, motion to file carries.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. That concludes the report of standing committees today. We'll now move to items for immediate consideration. We have three. First up is Councilmember Overstreet.
Okay, this is an item for immediate consideration. Elm's ID number 39274, a resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet, Bond, Collins, Lewis, Winston, Wykoff, Bakhtiari, Amos, Juan, Wes Morland, and Dozier. A resolution authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate a total amount not to exceed $135,000 to Gooder Incorporated pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta's Charter to support the Free Grocery Initiative, authorizing the mayor or his designated need to enter into a donation agreement which shall detail the actions of Gooder Incorporated concerning the free Gooder Grocery Store food pantry at William Walker Recreation Center, authorizing the chief financial officer or his designated need to make all payments from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes, whereas the City of Atlanta understands the challenges caused by food insecurity within neighborhoods that have fewer full-service supermarkets in their neighborhoods and is thereby committed to providing residents access to quality groceries and fresh food and eliminating food insecurity in every zip code within the city. And whereas the city aims to help underserved communities in the city by providing access to fresh, healthy food, convenient locations that provide these fresh food items. And whereas Gooder is a nonprofit that strives to end world hunger by cultivating countless resources for their nonprofit partners and network of recipients by leveraging technology and logistics to reduce waste and eliminate hunger. And whereas Gooder, through its hunger relief solutions, transforms local community spaces into pop-up grocery experiences or local grocery store to provide sustainable, easy-access food pantries for children and their families right in their communities. And whereas pursuant to Atlanta's City Resolution 24-r-366 adopted by the Atlanta City Council on June 3, 2024, and approved in accordance with City Charter on June 4, 2024, the City of Atlanta partnered with Gooder through the Hunger Relief Solutions Initiative to launch a free Gooder grocery store at William Walker Recreation Center located at 2405 Faber Road Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30331, with the goal of serving hundreds of families experiencing food insecurity. And whereas the Gooder Grocery Store at William Walker has delivered towards that goal with measurable impact in 2025, serving 1,600 individuals and distributing 40,000 pounds of food equivalent to 32,000 meals for families with an economic value of $95,392. And whereas there is a desire of the city pursuant to Section 6-306 of the Atlanta City Charter to donate an amount not to exceed $135,000 and zero cents to extend a partnership with Gooder and to continue to directly address food insecurity, health outcomes, and neighborhood stability. And whereas funding shall be used to stock, maintain, and staff Gooder Grocery Stores at William Walker Recreation Center located at 2405 Faber Road Southwest, Atlanta, 3031, 30331. Whereas continuing the grocery store initiative at William Walker will ensure consistent access to nutrition, food for families and seniors in the Campbellton Road neighborhood and support the City of Atlanta's neighborhood reinvestment strategy which prioritizes equitable access to essential services in underserved communities. And whereas the city desires to donate an amount not to exceed $135,000 to extend the partnership with Gooder and to enter into a donation agreement with Gooder which shall detail the actions concerning the free grocery initiatives at William Walker Rec. Now therefore be it resolved by the Atlanta City Council of City of Atlanta, Georgia, that pursuant to Section 6-306 of the Atlanta City of the Atlanta's Charter, the chief financial officer or his designated need is authorized to make a donation and the amount, the total amount not to exceed $135,000 to extend the partnership to support the Free Grocery Initiative at William Walker Recreation Center. Be it further resolved that the chief financial officer is hereby authorized to charge to and pay the donation authorized hereby from the following accounts, 1001, 140301, 121201, and 61100. Be it further resolved that the mayor or his designated need is authorized to execute a donation agreement regarding its donation to support Gooder Incorporated actions concerning the free grocery store food pantry at William Walker Rec. Be it further resolved that the mayor or his designated need is authorized to enter into any additional agreements, as may be necessary to carry out the purposes of the resolution or the terms of conditions provided in the donation agreement. Be it further resolved that a donation agreement and any related documents shall not become binding upon the city and the city will incur no obligation or liability under the same until they have been approved by the city attorney and her designated need as to form executed by the mayor or his designated need and delivered to Gooder Incorporated. Be it finally resolved that all resolutions as or parts of resolutions that are in conflict with these terms of this resolution are hereby waived and to the extent of the conflict. I move approval.
There's a motion by Councilmember Overstreet to approve Elm's ID 39274. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Amos. I would entertain, is there any discussion? I would entertain a motion to amend.
Move to amend to add Gooder Foundation. In place of Gooder Incorporated.
There's amendment by Councilmember Overstreet, seconded by Councilmember Hillis to amend this paper to read Gooder Foundation in all the places that it says Gooder Inc. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? We do this via name's consent. Any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the county name's consent on the motion to amend.
15 yeas, zero nays.
15 yeas, zero nays, the motion to amend carries. We're now back to discussion on the motion to adopt as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt as amended Elm's ID 39274.
Please open, the vote is open. Will everyone please vote?
I'm Terry's nine.
The votes close, fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have Elms ID number two five zero one six five four, and ordered by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond. Wait a minute, is that the right one? No. It's not the right one. Elms ID number three nine three two one, a resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate a total amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to the Urban League of Greater Atlanta pursuant to section six dash three zero six of the City of Atlanta's Charter to continue the city's support of the Urban League of Greater Atlanta's mission, identifying and placing low-income Atlanta residents referred through the city's Housing Help Center into safe, secure, and affordable housing, authorizing the mayor or his designee to enter into any necessary agreements to effectuate the donation, to authorize the chief financial officer and his designee to make the donation authorized hereby from accounts listed herein and for other purposes. And whereas the City of Atlanta, like cities and communities across the country, is facing an unprecedented housing affordability crisis, the effects of which are actually felt by low-income and moderate-low-income households. Whereas in an effort to ameliorate this crisis, Mayor Dickens has taken a bold step to create and preserve affordable housing in the city by funding the creation and preservation of affordable housing projects and programs. Oh, slanty. And whereas through funding authorized by twenty-three dash R dash three six one two, adopted by the City of Atlanta's Council on June fifth, twenty twenty-three, and approved by the mayor on June seventh, twenty twenty-three, Mayor Dickens' administration created a Housing Help Center with full-time experts on housing resources available in the City of Atlanta to assist residents in their search for affordable housing. And whereas the Urban League of Greater Atlanta, ULGA, is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization and is a member of the National Urban League Network, ninety-eight historic civil rights organizations throughout the United States dedicated to fostering economic empowerment in order to alleviate the standard of living, I'm sorry, elevate the standard of living in historically underserved urban communities. And whereas pursuant to section six dash three zero six of the City of Atlanta's Charter, the Atlanta City Council may authorize the donation of funds and services to a nonprofit organization for charitable purposes. And whereas pursuant to twenty-four dash R dash three four three four, adopted by the City Council on May sixth, twenty twenty-four, and approved by the mayor on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, the city authorized the donation to ULGA in the amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to support ULGA in identifying and placing low-income Atlanta residents referred through the city's Housing Help Center into safe, secure, and affordable housing. And whereas since the commencing of the mission to place low-income Atlanta residents into safe, secure, and affordable housing, including those referred through the Housing Help Center, ULGA has established itself as a vital component of the Housing Help Center, direct constituent aide, having served over two hundred households to date with the critical rental and utility assistance. And whereas unprecedented strains imposed upon the Atlanta households by recent political and economic circumstances such as protracted shutdowns of the federal government and disruptions of critical benefit programs, including Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, have heightened the demand and support for accelerated the development and resources available to support ULGA in identifying and placing low-income Atlanta residents referred through the Housing Help Center. And whereas the current supplemental, I'm sorry, operational balance of ULGA in support of this important mission is critically low, approximately four thousand, I'm sorry, forty-two hundred dollars, which is insufficient to meet the projected demand through the end of the year and risk a complete cessation of services within the next week. And whereas a pause in service provisions by ULGA will immediately result in the suspension of services for twenty-six households, a number that is poised to grow significantly in discontinuing this effective low-cost preventative program, now may reverse the progress to date and lead to greater long-term expenditures on emergency shelters and reactive services for most of its vulnerable households. Whereas as a result, low-income Atlanta households are faced with the prospect of extremely precarious economic circumstances and housing insecurity during the winter holidays, underscoring the urgency of authorizing a second donation of city funds prior to the conclusion of the Atlanta City Council's current quadrennial term, December first, twenty twenty-five. And whereas it is therefore the desire of the city to donate funds to ULGA in a total amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to prevent the suspension of the critical emergency financial assistance to residents. And whereas the city desires to enter into a donation agreement with ULGA that shall effectuate this donation and detail the actions of ULGA to support low-income Atlanta residents referred through the city's Housing Help Center. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Atlanta that pursuant to section six dash three zero six of the City of Atlanta's Charter, the chief financial officer or his designee is authorized to make a donation to the Urban League of Greater Atlanta in a total amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars and zero cents to continue the city's support of the Urban League of Greater Atlanta's mission, identifying and placing low-income Atlanta residents referred through the city's Housing Help Center for safe, secure, and affordable housing. Be it further resolved that the chief financial officer or his designee is hereby authorized to charge and pay from the donations authorized hereby from the following accounts listed. Be it further resolved that the mayor or his designee is authorized to effectuate any agreements necessary to effectuate the donation. Be it further resolved that the donation agreement by any necessary related agreements shall not become binding upon the city, and the city will incur no obligation of liability under the same until they have been approved by the city attorney or her designee as to form executed by the mayor or his designee and delivered to the Urban League of Greater Atlanta. Be it further resolved that the effective director of the Housing Help Center and the Urban League of Greater Atlanta shall submit a joint briefing to the chief financial officer and the chief operating officer within ninety days of this donation detailing the utilization of these emergency funds and presenting a joint recommendation for the sustainable, long-term funding of the Housing Help Center Direct Financial Assistance Program. Be it finally resolved that all resolutions and parts of resolutions that are here in conflict with the terms of this resolution are hereby waived to the extent of said conflict. Move approval.
There's a motion by Councilmember Bond to adopt Elms ID three nine three two one. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Amos. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Councilmember Bakhtari.
Yes, thank you. A little confused as to where this is going. Are we not just giving this money to the Housing Help Center to do? Because my understanding is they have quite the list, so I'm confused. Is this money going to the Housing Help Center? Are we giving this money to Urban League and asking the Housing Help Center to do the work? That's my question.
I don't know if there's somebody from
Is someone here that can address it?
Somebody from the administration can speak to that. We do. I'd entertain, hold on. I'd entertain a motion to move it.
No move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Bond, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtari to move to committee of the whole so we can hear from some experts. Is there any discussion on the motion moving committee of the whole? Do this via unanimous consent without objection or objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count and unanimous consent.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. We now send a committee of the whole.
Donnell Woodson, Executive Director of the Housing Help Center, comes from person Bakhtari to answer your question. This fund is a second infusion of the original six hundred K that was awarded to Urban League of Greater Atlanta. We've executed for the last year a emergency fund for our office. So directly to answer your question, the funds are allocated to constituents who come to our office for emergency one-time service. Those funds are awarded to ULGA. They have fiduciary responsibility to delegate those funds to the constituents or to the landlord, not directly to the constituent. So this is a re-up of those funds as we in the last two months because of multiple federal shutdown, the food issue as well. We've seen a large increase in the last two months, which the last bit of that funding went down to forty-two hundred as of last week. So we don't in-house have funds currently as the Housing Help Center, where we are giving those funds out ourselves. They are awarded to the nonprofit, and then the nonprofit does has a fiduciary responsibility.
Okay. I'm going to allow Councilmember Juan to go and ask this question. I have another follow-up, but I'm going to go ahead and I need a moment to gather my thoughts.
Councilmember Juan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for that explanation. So I'm curious as to the original six hundred thousand dollars. I'm piggybacking on Councilmember Bakhtari's question. We are giving, making the donation to ULGA, who then is then resub granting it to actual service providers. Is that correct?
No. So they are, they have the funds, hold the funds, and then we vet. So we're acting as the staff who then, not administrative staff, but actually programmatic staff. So we're working the application, doing the initial process for the constituent, readying them to then come to ULGA. ULGA takes them through the last final vetting of the documentation to prove need, and then they award on our behalf.
Go ahead.
No.
Do they make the payments directly to the landlords?
To the landlord.
Of the six hundred thousand that we provided to them, I think it served ninety-seven odd people.
No, two hundred.
Okay, sorry, sorry. What did ULGA derive a administrative fee or percentage?
Yes.
Do you know what that number was?
Don't offhand know what that number is.
Can you estimate?
Well, do you have an estimate of the percentage that were awarded to? I think so. It was two tranches of funding to equal the six hundred. I think fifty thousand on each one of those, so for a total of one hundred.
One hundred thousand out of the six hundred thousand?
Yes.
But you said you do all the processing?
So we, yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
So goes back to that conversation we're having about the Affordable Trust Fund. It's like, wait a minute. All of a sudden, we're finding out that our dollars are getting diverted, and then only a certain small percentage, no, I wouldn't say small percentage, a certain percentage is actually getting to the implementation of, or the beneficiaries of those monies.
Councilmember Juan.
Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes these arrangements are set up because of the lack of the experience with dealing with fiduciary grant accountability. And in this case, this entity does the work, but the grant authority, fiduciary responsibility, insurance carrier, fiduciary bonding capacity is with another entity.
I appreciate that explanation, but it's still quite disappointing to hear a hundred thousand dollars of six hundred thousand dollars went to that purpose when we're already hearing from finance them squeal every time that we ask for any sort of funds deployment, that the funds are overburdened. So I see, Ms. Robinson, were you trying to add more context?
Yes, of course. Under the gratuities clause and the city's ability to provide donations for charitable purposes, we have to give money to a nonprofit charity as a donation rather than directly to the recipient, the ultimate recipient. They have to stand in as our fiscal agent to, for the donation to be authorized under that charter and the gratuities clause.
I understand that. I just, there's a part of me that feels like with those percentages, we really should be finding a more efficient way, especially again, he opened by saying they're doing all the processing work. I mean, the value add here is really disappointing. So, all right, that, thank you for answering my question.
Sure.
Councilmember Bakhtari.
So I'm curious, is this slated under debt service, or is it slated under employees? Which are the buckets? Well, my understanding is when we created this fund, we were putting a cap on debt service and we're doing a cap on employment. So I'm curious as to how this enters into all of that.
Sure. Thanks for the question, Councilmember Bakhtari. Will Tucker, Director of the Housing Innovation Lab in the Mayor's Office of Policy. You know, looking forward and trying to forecast, you know, this substitute that y'all adopted today for the Housing Trust Fund paper, we think it anticipates the entire universe of potential uses, potential eligible uses. And within that universe, you know, this funding, I would expect be in that programmatic bucket, that sub-bullet for programmatic service provision.
Thank you. I want to say, like, I want to commend you, Mr. Tucker, as well as Mr. Woodson here, and that of Chief English. I mean, this, the work that we have done, that the city has done, this administration has done around housing, the ripple effects cannot be measured. has done around housing, the ripple effects cannot be measured. City leads the way in terms of nationally. We'll stand on that 1,000 times over. The frustration and the confusion is coming from the fact that we hear constantly that we're out of money in the trust fund, and there does not seem to be a balance between the usage between the administration and the council and trying to figure out how that's going to work in the future as we see more and more needs come up. That's going to be something that's going to be, that's going to have to be tackled at the big top of next year because we are only going to see this run and happen more and more. And I don't want to say that I'm not supportive of housing. The work speaks for itself. Just not knowing the numbers causes confusion and distrust where it is preventable. And so if they're understanding, wanting to know how staffing is working, how is the, how many employees do we have in the Housing Help Center? Because Mr. Woodson and Ms. Wells are incredible, like, but do we have the support there in terms of debt servicing? How is that going to work? How are we going to utilize the funds? What is the balance going to be between council and the administration, how we steward these dollars and ensure that we understand where they're going and that we are spending each dollar responsibly without, of course, curtailing the importance of getting this work done in a timely fashion? Just increased communication. I do understand that this, you know, needs to pass today. I would be lying to you if I said I wasn't frustrated at how it's happened and kind of what feels like a lack of communication, but I understand, and I look forward to continued conversation and seeing how we do better down the line. But I do most, first and foremost, want to thank y'all for your work because that should never be missed. Just the devil's always in the details.
Thank you, Councilmembers. And we look forward to working closely with you at the top of the year to make sure that we are as coordinated as possible going into this scarcity environment. It's more important now than ever, so we appreciate that.
I look forward to seeing how the West House looks after the Christmas break. So, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Thank you all.
There's a motion by Councilor Westmoreland to exit committee of the whole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bond, any discussion on the motion to move out of committee of the whole? We do this via AMIS consent without objection, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the county of AMIS consent on the motion to move out of committee of the whole.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. We're now back in regular session, and the motion is to adopt Elms ID 39321. Is there any more discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing no move to vote, Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt this item.
The vote is open. The vote's closed. Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Motion to move to the mayor's office.
One moment. I'm sorry, that's fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries. Councilman Bond.
Motion to move to the mayor's office post haste.
There's a motion to move this item post haste by Councilmember Bond, seconded by Councilmember Amos. Any discussion on the motion to move this item post haste? We do this via AMIS consent, any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on the motion to move this item post haste.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion carries.
I'd like to explain my vote.
Councilman Bond.
If I voted yes, so we can move it to the mayor's post haste so we can get the project underway, but councilmembers Juan and Bakhtari, there's nothing that prevents the city of Atlanta from creating its own 501(c)(3) to handle, to be the debt, to be the recipient for these types of grants in the future. And that's something perhaps we can look forward to next term.
Thank you. Next up, Councilman Amos, item for immediate consideration.
As Sir, Council President, for the sake of time, I'd like to ask legal, if I just do a pinkish swell, can I read the caption and we can vote and go home? I got to read the whole thing. I know, got to read the whole thing. Immediate consideration, Amos ID 39322. A resolution by Councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the city of Atlanta to execute all documents necessary to acknowledge the assignment of the uninspired lease terms of concessions lease agreement number listed food and beverage concessions on concourse C midpoint at Harsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and concessions lease agreement to agreement listed concourse B and F food and beverage concessions at Harsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport to OHM Concessions Group LLC and for other purposes. Whereas the city of Atlanta known and operates Harsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, which is managed by the city department of aviation, whereas pursuant to resolution number listed adopted by the Atlanta City Council, the city entered into a concessions lease agreement for concourse B and F food and beverage concessions with Global Concessions Inc. at the airport dated March 12, 2012. And whereas pursuant to resolution listed adopted by the Atlanta City Council, the city also entered concessions lease agreement for food and beverage concessions at concourse C midpoint dated September 5, 2018. And whereas April 2, 2025, Global filed a petition for relief under chapter 11, title 11 of the United States Code before the United States Bankruptcy Court for the Northern District of Georgia commencing case number listed, and whereas the bankruptcy court approved and amended the restated asset purchase agreement dated November 7, 2025 between Global and OHM Concessions Group LLC pursuant, in which Global assigned all its rights, title and interest to concourse B and F lease and concourse C midpoint lease, and OHM assume all obligations of Global under the concourse B and F lease and concourse C midpoint lease. And whereas Global and OHM concluded the assignment of bill of sale and assignment and assumption agreement dated as of November 21, 2025, whereas the initial term of concourse B and F lease expire October 30, 2026, with an option to renew for a three-year term, whereas the concourse C midpoint lease expires on March 5, 2033. And whereas Global desired to assign both the concourse B and F lease and concourse C midpoint lease to OHM pursuant to the bankruptcy court's order. And whereas the aviation general manager believe it is the city's best interest to acknowledge the assignment of the lease agreement for Global to OHM. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Atlanta, Georgia, that the mayor or his designee on behalf of the city is hereby authorized to execute all legal documents necessary to acknowledge the assignment and assumption of concourse B and F lease and concourse C midpoint lease from Global Concessions Inc. to OHM Concessions Group LLC. Be it further resolved that the city attorney is directed to prepare and acknowledge of the assessment purchase agreement amendments or any other necessary documentation to evidence the city's acknowledgement for execution by the mayor or his designee. Be it finally resolved that the found, that the documentation will not be combining until the city, and the city will incur no liability thereunder until it has been executed by the mayor or tested to by the municipal court, approved, asked to form by the city of attorney and delivered to OHM Concessions Group LLC. Motion to approve.
There's a motion to adopt Elms ID 39322 by Councilmember Amos. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bond. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing no, open the vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt Elms ID 39322.
Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed. Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Mr. President, make a motion to move said item to the mayor post haste.
There's a motion by Councilmember Amos, seconded by Councilmember Bond, move this item post haste to the mayor's office. Is there any discussion? We do this via AMIS consent, any objection to the motion to move this item post haste? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on the AMIS consent.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion moved post haste carries.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Additionally, for immediate consideration today, oh, Councilman Bond. Oh, sorry?
Oh, we have one more.
Yeah. Councilman Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elms ID number 39323. A resolution by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, Antonio Lewis, Marcy Carrey Overstreet, Collins Winston Batiera, Wykoff, Hillis, Bond, Amos, Dozier, Westmoreland. Whereas, Liliana Batiera. Whereas the Atlanta City Council recognizes the importance. A resolution by Councilmembers Andrea Boone and Antonio Lewis requesting that the family of Linton Blackwell will be granted access to viewing the recording of the incident resulting in his shooting and for other purposes. Whereas the Atlanta City Council recognizes the importance of transparency and accountability in matters involving public safety and law enforcement. And whereas the family of Linton Blackwell has requested access to view the video recording of the incident in which Mr. Blackwell was shot multiple times resulting in his death. And whereas the council acknowledges the family's right to seek clarity, closure, and understanding regarding the circumstances of the incident. And whereas providing the family with access to the video recording would promote trust between the community and the institutions charged with protecting public safety. And whereas the council affirms that such access should be granted in a manner consistent with applicable laws, policies, and procedures governing the release of evidence and sensitive materials. Now therefore be resolved by the Atlanta City Council that the council formally requests that the appropriate authorities grant the family of Linton Blackwell access to view the video recording of the incident resulting in his shooting. Be it further resolved, any access in accordance with this requirement, access shall be provided in a secure and respectful manner, ensuring that the dignity of the family and the integrity of any ongoing investigations. Be it further resolved that the council urges all relevant agencies to act promptly in facilitating this request, recognizing the family's need for transparency and closure. Be it finally resolved that the office of the municipal clerk shall transmit a copy of this resolution to the mayor's office, the Atlanta Police Department, and any other relevant authorities for immediate consideration and action. Move approval.
Second. There's a motion to adopt Elms ID 39323 by Councilmember Boone, seconded by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing no, we move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed. Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries. Any other papers for immediate consideration? There's a motion by Councilmember Bond to move the item that we just adopted, 39323, to the mayor's office post haste, seconded by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion on the motion to move this item post haste? We do this via AMIS consent without objection, any objection to the motion to move this item post haste? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on the motion to move this item post haste.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays.
Fourteen yeas, zero nays. The motion carries. Before we move to general remarks, I just want to ask Councilwoman Wykoff if she would It takes a very special person to step into this place, and when Councilmember Faroki stepped down, you, your name immediately came forward as someone who could come in, be effective, be able to get along with this incredible body. But your service to this city is not defined by the last few months. You have been working to make this city better in professional and civic ways across the entire community. And on a personal level, I can't tell you how proud it's been to be your constituent from District 2 for the last few months. So as my final act, it is my pleasure to give you the Spirit of Atlanta Award, and thank you for your service on this council.
I just wanted to say it's been an honor to serve with all of you over the last couple of months, and I'm just so thankful to all the council members, to all the staff, to the administration, and to the honorable Amir Faroki, who saw my potential and Juan asked me to serve, and I graciously said, wait, hold on, how many boards do I serve on? Do I have any conflict of interest? And it was so wonderful to have it all worked out. So thank you all very much for just everything. You all are family, so thanks.
With that, we will move to general remarks. Councilman Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, three things, just quickly. I'm glad we passed the resolution in support of the family that came down here today, and I just want to say I hope we follow the rules in processing, or that the department, the APD, follows the rules in investigating the incident. It's been turned over to the GBI. But I also want to implore someone at APD or in the mayor's office or in the Office of Constituent Service to reach out to that family and give them an update and keep them well-briefed. I was very moved by what they said today, and it took me back to, I believe it was 1970 or '71. Officer Friendly came to Oathorp Elementary School. They brought the car, we got in here, we played with the lights, turned on the siren. That night, we came on, turned on WSB's John Pruitt, and saw Jose Williams in Mechanicsville. APD had shot a man that was lying on his face in handcuffs and was shot in the back. Six bullets in this man's back. And it rocked my perspective as a child on how the police, or what can happen with a rogue police officer. Seventeen bullets in the back. You have emptied your weapon into that person's back. So I hope that in this investigation, you know, there's a, under the Constitution of the United States, there's a presumption of innocence in these incidents, but I hope it is fully investigated to the letter of the law and that the family is kept informed all the way through and that justice is served. My second point, the Douglas Astros, they went down in defeat on Saturday, but after overcoming a season where they were only expected to win three games, they made it to the Final Four in the state football championship, exceeding all goals. So we want to give them some congratulations for making that effort. And then thirdly, I want to announce that the ATL Fresh and Free Food Giveaway is going to be held this Wednesday, December 3, 2:00 p.m., at the Hunter Hills Baptist Church in historic Hunter Hills at 166 Edward Street, promptly at 2:00 p.m. There's no prerequisite to receive this help, so if you don't need it, please spread the word. There'll be one other ATL Fresh and Free before the year ends, and that will be on December the 17th, and that'll be the final one for this calendar year. And so I also just want to put out there as I close, I made the world's greatest black eyed peas and lima beans, and want to give Kenny Morris credit. They donated a turkey, a lemon pepper turkey. Never had anything like it. It was, it will set a new trend. It's fantastic, but never, you know, lemon pepper and Atlanta go hand in hand. But I withdraw, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to wish a belated happy birthday to my youngest daughter, Naomi, who turned two years old this past Saturday. And she appreciates that. And then separately, just want, I know you're going to say it too, but want to remind people that there is an election that will be held tomorrow. Please go out and vote. If you live in the city of Atlanta, there is something on your ballot, so please go vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Bakhtari.
Thank you. Before I talk about my colleagues, I wanted to take a moment. Deputy Chief Pace, I know that you're shifting into a different role, but for the last four years, thank you. I know how difficult it has been to manage all these different personalities. I say that primarily about myself. Thank you for everything you've done. And to Deputy Chief Slade, looking forward to having you onboard. You got, you got some shoes to fill. It'll be weird not getting to see Theo on the hall almost every day, but excited to work with you, and thank you both, really, because being the bridge is not easy, so I appreciate y'all. And to Councilman Wykoff, really feel very lucky to call you a better friend after this and for everything you've done, and I'm so grateful. Learned so much from you the last three months, and I'm really glad that you, that you're here. And I'm sad that our time was cut short, but you, if you allow me, I hope to continue leaning on you for a lot of input on the areas of your expertise, which far outmatch my own. my own. To Council President, who is, I'm going to see who takes off their glasses first. To Council President Shipman. I just, I feel so lucky to get to call you a friend after all of this, and thank you so much for the last four years, and especially for the first two. I don't know how I would have done it without you. And to Shookums, to Councilmember Shook, well, we've already, we've already celebrated enough today. Love you and I'll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank some folks who have been extremely, extremely helpful to all of us. They won Telly Awards. Our wonderful communications staff won two or three Telly Awards, which is some of the highest awards that the communications professionals can get in the video production space. Zena Lewis, Brian Ezek, Phyllis Jackson, Dexter Andrews, Daniel and Tiffany. I want us to just give them a hand for winning those wonderful awards. They take up a lot of time, and some of the videos that they make have gone down in history and are in museums in Washington, DC and otherwise. So thank you all for all you all do. Our wonderful law department, led by Patrice Perkins Hooker and Amber Robinson, thank you too. Thank you all so much for all you all do for us. Thank you. And to our birthday colleague, Jason Winston, I don't think we will be here to celebrate your birthday. What day is your birthday?
14th.
Yeah, but happy birthday. Thank you for being a bright spirit. And again, Mr. President and Mr. Shook, we wish you all well. We will be in touch with you all. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis.
One more, one more. And to this administration, Theo, I don't think we will ever not be able to see you on the hall because we will call you. Thank you for your patience, your indulgence, and being top notch. Welcome, Ms. Slade, to Ms. Burks, the mayor, Mr. English, this entire team. Thank you all for what you all do for the city of Atlanta.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis.
Just want to send out a huge shout out to South Atlanta High School flag football team, the, our ladies' flag football team, which made the state, the state playoffs. Super excited to see the ladies and all they're running, that they're doing it on our field. The flag football program is one of the only programs where you actually get to see home games. So to be at South Atlanta High School and watch our young ladies run circles around people has been amazing, and I look forward to seeing what you do next year. Also, huge celebration and congratulations to their coach. Their coach who won Coach of the Year, amazing young person. We grew up so surprised. Well wishes to you, your family, and the team. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shook.
Thank you. Just a few remarks. First of all, I want to share with you what I've learned today, which is, if you want to get really, get people really excited about you, and City Hall just announced that you're leaving. Oh, to Corona and Dennis and Sally, on behalf of the thousands of people who they have helped, we've been together the whole time, thank you to them, and I love them, and they will do well wherever they go. To my colleagues, I will miss y'all. Actually, actually, my last words from this chair go out to the people who put me in it, to the good people of District 7. I cannot thank you enough for your kindness and your support.
Other remarks. Chuck, 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 Chuck. Any, any other remarks from colleagues?
Just in the famous words of Councilmember Shook called a question.
I do have a couple of things I'd like to say briefly. One is I want to thank all those who served as committee chairs this year. It is not an easy job. I appreciate your leadership and your moving everything along quite nicely this year. Second, I want to extend my heartfelt good wishes and good luck to Council President-Elect Overstreet, who will be filling this role at the next meeting. I told her earlier, she cannot take this gavel because this one is personalized, but fear not, colleagues, I am going to make sure she has her own personalized gavel for use at the first meeting so that she can, she can keep, she can keep everything in line. But truly, I wish you Godspeed and good luck and look forward to your leadership. Finally, let me reiterate what Councilmember Dozier said, there are elections tomorrow, District 711, as well as citywide school board, so please get out and vote tomorrow at your precinct. Look up on the Georgia Secretary of State's office if you don't know where your precinct is. And with that, I would ask the clerk to call the closing roll.
Sorry, Councilmember Bakhtiari, causing trouble again. Okay. We have Council President Doug Shipman.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Post 1 at Large. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Post 2 at Large. Councilmember Ishay Collins, Post 3 at Large. Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District 1.
Here.
Councilmember Carden Wykoff, District 2. Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District 3. Councilmember Jason Dozier, District 4. Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, District 5. Councilmember Alex Wong, District 6. Is he here? Okay. Councilmember Howard Shook, District 7. Councilmember Nora, District 8. Councilmember Dustin Hillis, District 9. Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, District 10.
Present.
Council President-elect Marcy Carter Overstreet.
Present.
Councilmember Antonio Lewis, District 12.
Without objection, that ends this council. We're adjourned.